Oh.
Good um, welcome, welcome to the June seventeenth, twenty twenty one Planning Board meeting. I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order at six oh one P M. And I would like to turn it over to Jean Gatz, who's going to give us the virtual meeting procedures for tonight.
Great. Okay. Give me just a second and we will. Get those up here. Alright, these may look a little different to some folks. We are. Um, I'm using the meeting protocol that our city council has adopted recently and started to use Tuesday for to help encourage productive meetings. Let me make sure you can see this. Let's see. Are we sharing? Can you all see that? Just give me a thumb.
It shows you sharing. It shows you sharing, but I still have not seen the slide appear. There it is. Now I see it. Everybody.
There we go. Okay. Very good. So, um, the city has engaged with community members to co-create a vision for productive, meaningful, and inclusive civic conversations. And this vision supports physical and emotional safety for community members, staff, and council. It is democracy for people of all ages, identities, lived experiences, and political perspectives. More information about this vision and the full rules of decorum can be found on the participate in city council meetings page of the city's website. The following are examples of the rules of decorum found in the Boulder Revised Code and other guidelines that support this vision, and these will be upheld during this meeting. All remarks and testimony shall be limited to matters related to city business. No participant shall make threats or use other forms of intimidation against any person. Obscenity, dehumanizing language, racial epithets, or other speech and behavior that disrupts or otherwise impedes the ability to conduct the meeting are prohibited. And participants are required to sign up to speak using the name they are commonly known by, and individuals must display their whole name before being allowed to speak online. Currently, only audio testimony is permitted online. I know with this webinar function, it's a little hard to see how your name is is displaying. So I may ask you in the in the chat to clarify your name. It or we'll make sure that if we'd ask you to, please use your full name and address when you are unmuted to speak for the record. The other thing that I would like to, okay. I did want to. Uh, talk a little bit about the Zoom webinar function. Can you see this? The. So we have the raise hand function, and as I mentioned, when it's your turn, I'll adjust the setting and then you'll be able to see an option to unmute. One more thing is that we would like, the chat function is enabled, but should only be used for technical issues. To reach me as the host, you can send me your name to have it displayed appropriately so that I can change that for you. And I'm just gonna remind folks that this is really not for comments or questions for the board. It's like having side conversations, so it's really not. It's really disruptive and hard for the board members to and staff to concentrate on the issues at hand. So please don't do that. We do reserve the right to disable folks' chat if that becomes an issue. So I think that's it. We will have the open comment. That'll be three minutes per person. That is for any items that are not related to the public hearing item, the Spine Road project. And then we will have the public hearing for that for two minutes each. For the Spine Road Project. We do have about fifty folks signed up, pre-signed up for that. Cindy has posted that list on the Planning Board website. I'll put a link to that in the chat here in just a minute so that folks can see where they are on that list. And then once we're through, all of those folks will use the raise hand function and let others that would like to address the board do so. Have I forgotten anything?
That sounds great, Jean. Thank you. And I'll just also note that we saw these slides also at the retreat last week, so we got a little preview of them and I love the new fun. So before we go into the rest of the agenda, I see that we have everyone, Lupita unexpectedly couldn't make this meeting. So we have six instead of seven planning board members, which we were expecting. And so I think there's, the applicant might may wish to ask us about some options regarding that. Matt, did you want to?
Yeah, thank you very much, David. This project has generated a lot of interest in the community, and we understand there's a large number of people signed up to speak tonight. Our project has also changed considerably in response to the feedback that we got from Planning Board and other constituents in the process. Out of respect for the process, the speakers already signed up to speak tonight. We would like to request that the presentations and public comment be held tonight, so all of those voices can be heard. And that the deliberations be continued to June twenty fourth, which is already reserved for this project, so that all of the planning board members can have their voices heard as well.
Okay, well, thank you, Matt. And actually, we did kind of reserve next week, just because we thought this item might go long anyway, but. But this request is something we can certainly consider. I did check with Lupita earlier today, and she will be able to attend next week and able to review all of the materials and the video and all of the comment from tonight in advance of that meeting, if we do wish to take this route. Cindy, did you happen, did you get a response from everybody else as to whether they will be able to make it?
No, I didn't. I didn't hear from everyone. I heard from Sarah, John, and Lisa. And so I, oh, yourself.
Yeah.
Didn't hear from everyone, no.
So maybe we could ask Georgine Peter if you are available next weekend.
I am planning to attend.
Okay. Same.
And I'll just say what I said to Cindy, which is that I expect to attend, but I very well might not. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't bet on my presence necessarily.
Yeah, that's always, of course, the risk that we take is that someone else may not be able to for some reason. And so I was gonna point that out as well. So but as at this point, we see that at least all seven are likely to attend. So, John? Oh, you need to unmute. Still muted. There you go. No, still, still not here.
I think it might be a mic issue, John, as opposed to muting, because I'm seeing your mute and unmute go on and off. But we're not hearing you. Do you have an external microphone or another? No. Might be in settings. I don't know.
Did you want to try to ask the question before we? Well, let's, let's see if there's any other items for discussion, and we can certainly look back to John if if you get the microphone on your computer working.
And also just do something in chat in the short term.
Yeah, since this is procedural. John, go ahead and. You could type something in chat. Any, any other questions about this? It would mean that we would be, so I think the proposal would be to get through the applicant presentation or the city's presentation, the applicant's presentation and the public comment, since we have all these folks who showed up for public comment. This would be respectful to the public, but during the time when we close the public hearing tonight until next week, we would not be entertaining any new information, because we would be continuing, kind of like we've done in the past where we've had a particular item span two meetings. So that would mean we have to try not to read newspaper articles and and look at emails on on this particular subject.
David, I had a question for you regarding public comment. So if this is continued or the applicant doesn't present until next week, does that also mean that the public could end up commenting in next week's meeting as well?
Well, the, not if we take this route. If we took this route, we would do the the staff and applicant presentations and public comment in this meeting, and then we would close the public hearing and only deliberate next meeting. Okay. Now, the, you know, there is the other option of just delaying the entire thing, but that would be pretty impactful to the public since they've all shown up tonight.
So. I guess one other question I have, David, that I don't think it's necessarily an impediment to doing it this way. But I just want us to consider it, and maybe this is a hella question, is just if if this is something that we need to offer standard henceforth. You know, I mean, if we offer this to one applicant, then anytime that we're down a planning board member, do we entertain this request? And perhaps we do, and I'm not saying it's a good thing or a bad thing or whatever, but just what precedent or potential expectation are we setting? And I don't, I don't think it's an unreasonable or bad request, just to be clear, just, you know, do we do it for some people and not for other people? And how do we choose?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think you have to approve it for all people. Under your rules, an applicant can request a continuance. And that can be done up to forty eight hours before the meeting without planning board approval, but once that time period has passed, the request can be made to the board and the board can approve it for good cause. So that's really the standard that we have. So but once we learned that Lupita was going to be absent, the applicant considered asking for a complete continuance. And then, and then I actually proposed that we could proceed in this manner, because we are already online. So Lupita has the opportunity, if she can participate next week, and she has said that she can. She can see exactly the same evidence that you all have seen. She won't have the opportunity to ask questions, but she will have exactly the same knowledge as you all, and and there'd be no difference in how she views the evidence compared to you. So I think this is a fine way to go forward, and we kind of expected that the meeting was likely going to go into next week anyways, in light of the public interest in it, amount of testimony that we're anticipating.
Cool. Thank you, Hal. That's very helpful.
Yeah, and and if I add on to what David stated, you all went through this recent, where we continued a hearing following the public hearing, because you didn't, you weren't able to come to a decision that same night. The same rules that then would apply again if the public hearing is closed, you couldn't consider any additional emails that come in following the hearing today, and you couldn't talk amongst each other about the project. The project would only continue next week in the hearing room again, and and the public hearing would be closed at that point in time.
Sarah?
Um, I think, given that we have, what, fifty five or sixty speakers? Is that the number?
Somewhere on that, yeah.
Yeah, even at two minutes per, that's a very long hearing, not including the staff presentation and the applicant presentation. And I think that we would all do a better job if we could not doing this at midnight, which would be when we would be doing it.
I agree, and I think, so I think that there are advantages to the board as well. But I also think, you know, that this is, you know, a little bit different, because usually we would decide this after the public hearing, because it's late, and we're deciding at the beginning due to this request, but I think that's just fine as well. Any other concerns or comments? I'd kind of like to wait for John to come back, because I have a motion that I would like to, because I would like the board to formally vote on this. Is John coming there? He's coming. And he's promoted. Let's see if we can hear John now. I heard a click. John? Yeah, can we hear you? Oh, gosh.
The, the other thing he might consider is dialing on his phone. I've done that many times.
Yeah, go ahead and do that. I guess, have you tried turning off your video and speaking? That's the only other thing we can try. No, nothing there. Okay, yeah, if you could dial in on your phone.
And then maybe, John, if it's not, if it doesn't distract you from giving proper attention to staff and applicants. My guess is it's something somewhere in your audio settings, most likely, so it could be on your computer, like on the hardware, or it could be a software setting in Zoom. But I like the workaround of the phone for now.
So, John, for now, did you want us to wait for you to get on by phone to do the motion, or are you happy doing hand signals? You're okay to go forward? Okay, and we'll just make sure that if we have further discussion on anything. So I'd like to make a motion to approve, I think, did I hear a comment? Oh, to approve continuance of board deliberation on City of Boulder Planning Board, June seventeen, twenty twenty one Agenda Item five A, Case Number L U R twenty twenty zero 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 six three, following the public hearing tonight to a second regular meeting of the Planning Board to be held on June twenty fourth, twenty twenty one. The public hearing for this item will be closed before the continuation takes effect. Do I get a second? Please, I think, oh, sorry.
This is fine.
I let's, I saw your thumb first, Lisa, so we'll go ahead and and do that. Okay, I'll just go ahead and do an all in favor hand raise. Since this is procedural. Okay, good. I have nobody opposed, so it's unanimous. Thank you very much. So, great. And again, John, if you need to dial in, so we'll, now we'll just go into the regular agenda as as we normally would, and we've already made our decision on the continuance when we get there. So we have the item number two, we have approval of minutes tonight. We have one set of minutes to approve, and that's the May sixth, twenty twenty one. I know I made a couple of comments that got into the packet. Any comments or motion?
I'll move to approve.
Sarah moves to approve. Second. Peter seconds. Okay. Procedural, so I'll just do hand raise on this one as well. All in favor? I see six hands. Great. So we have a unanimous approval of the minutes. Thank you so much. Good job. Great job, Cindy. Really, really good set of minutes. So with that, we'll go into public participation. This is public participation that we have at the beginning of every meeting, so it's for any item that is not a public hearing item. And we're going to go ahead and allow three minutes for for the this section, because generally we don't have too many people speaking in this portion, and then it's going to be two minutes for the for the public hearing item. The one public hearing item is the Gun Barrel, Celestial Seasonings, Spine Road Site Review and Use Review. So if you want to speak on that, please don't raise your hand right now. Please wait a bit, and we'll get to that after the staff and applicant presentations. But so only if you're speaking on something else. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Jean, and I'm just gonna say she's gonna be displaying a timer by sharing screen. If you want, you can actually drag your screen handle to the left to enlarge the area where all the faces are. So because you really don't need to see that timer very large while the speakers are speaking, but there will be a timer displayed. So there's a little handle on Zoom. You can resize your speaker area. Take it away, Jean.
Thanks, David. Okay, I appreciate everybody bearing with me. My system is moving a little slow tonight. Unfortunately. Okay, can you see my timer?
Not yet, but we'll let you know when it's there.
Okay. Right, I see Jerry Shapens and Lynn Segal with hands up. So let's see, Jerry, you should be able to unmute. Well, okay, there we go. Nope. Asking unmute. How about now?
We can see your desktop now, Jean.
Okay. All right, so for this section, why don't I just do, I will do my phone timer and I will stop sharing. I will give a signal when there's thirty seconds remaining. And I'll see if I can get the timer working for the next speaker. Jerry, are you able to unmute? Okay, I'm still working on that. So let's move on to Lynn. Lynn, why don't you go ahead and try to unmute? And I will give a signal when you have thirty seconds left.
I love your screen saver. I just wanted to jump right in. God, that was gorgeous. Um, okay, this is what we need. And as I was listening to the gun barrel thing, and I know this is not about gun barrel, but you know, this is about the same, this is happening all over town. What we need is to know, in any given development, as you're approving it, how many people are in that area and region that need housing? And what are their incomes to provide the housing? Because as it turns out, we have all this housing, you know, supposedly a thousand units around town that aren't occupied, that are vacant. It's not just the C U students. And why are they vacant? Possibly they're the wrong price for the people that need to live there. And I really am offended by the term workforce housing. That is just not true, and it's not okay to use that terminology. You know, do people that are less than sixty thousand people or that need affordable housing, are they like lazy housing? I mean, what kind of statement is that workforce housing? The people that work hardest, I guarantee you, are the ones that make less than sixty thousand a year. There are probably two people making thirty thousand a year doing hard labor. That's workforce housing. So don't use that term just uniformly, and it gets very misused, and it should not be used. It should be stricken from, and I don't care if it's a standardized form of of expression. It's not okay. So let's get it clear exactly who are these people we need to house? And what, what are, what is, what are their incomes? And what can they pay for housing? And then the other thing to consider is what about all the people that want to move here that can't, you know? And that's another issue. But you have to understand the data, and we don't have the data when when you folks are making these decisions. We don't know what we're deciding, and twenty years later, we find we haven't met our housing goals. I wonder why. It hasn't been really quantitatively established how we do that. It's not just a simple housing, you know? And and this twenty five percent of affordable, where did that figure come from? Because for all of that affordable, you know, we get more service jobs and we get more demand for affordable. And then we have this cycle of the need for more and more affordable over time with each project, and yet they're getting approved for twenty five percent. That's such a cheap tip.
Then you've got about ten seconds.
That's, that's, you know, and yeah, Jean, if you can get the timer in a, in a window, that would be really cool.
I'm really trying to, but.
Last night, you know, or.
I would love to do that.
Um, anyway, so, so those are kind of some issues I wanted to bring up, to think about quantifying everything more to be able to make really astute decisions without them seeming to be political. They should be straightforward.
Great. Thank you, Lynn. Okay, Jerry, if you're here, it will be your turn.
Yeah, I know, Sarah. So we're not supposed to look at the chat, but there is somebody that should be kicked out of the meeting.
Okay.
Thank you, Sarah. Um, if somebody can do that. Let's see. Um, and, um, Gina. Somebody is sending obscenities to the panelists.
Oh, you're right. Sorry.
We can kick them out.
You betcha.
So for Soon Bomb, Jean, the a bunch of hands went up, and I'm thinking maybe Jerry's went up for the public hearing item and just got stuck up. You aren't hearing from Jerry Shapens right now?
Okay. Okay. Here we go. All right, um.
And I apologize to anyone from the panelists in the public that has had to read the obscenities that come in chat. That's unfortunate. It's something that we haven't had happen yet. And all right. Great. So shall we just go ahead then and go forward? As soon you've tried to get Jerry Shapens, right, Jean?
I have tried to unmute, and perhaps Jerry just stepped away until the.
Until the other hearing item. Okay, so let's go ahead and move forward. And and we'll go ahead and close general public participation. And we'll move on to our call-ups and continuations. We have one call-up item, which is a non-conforming use review. Request to convert an existing triplex at fifteen forty Grove Street to a duplex and add a new accessory structure in the rear yard composed of a two parking space carport with a two hundred and fifty five square foot home office space above. The decision may be called up before the planning board or board on or before June twenty third, twenty twenty one. So I'll just open it up for any comments or questions the board might have on this particular call-up item. No, no desires to call this up? Okay, with that, then we'll go ahead and move on to our public hearing item for tonight. So tonight, we have one public hearing item. Consideration of a combined site and reuse review application, Case Number L U R twenty twenty dash zero 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 six three to develop the nine point eight seven acre site located at forty seven seventy five, et cetera, Spine Road. There are three addresses with two hundred and thirty attached residential units, a cafe, library, art space, and community areas, as well as a mobility hub and green space. So I will go ahead and turn it over to our staff, Charles, for presentation.
Thanks so much. Good evening, Chair members of the board. I'm gonna turn it over to Elaine McLaughlin. She has served as the case manager on this application. She'll be presenting staff's analysis this evening. I would also make note that we have representatives from the city's Housing and Human Services, Engineering, Flood and Transportation, as well as our Prairie Dog Specialist with us this evening. So we do have a panel of staff experts here as well when clarifying questions come up. So Elaine, take it away.
Great. Thanks, Charles, and good evening, everyone. I'm just gonna jump right in, and it always helps to review where this project has been. As most of us know, this was previously a concept plan review. It was submitted about a year and a half ago. It was reviewed by the Planning Board in May of last year. Sixty five members of the public participated, and then City Council reviewed the application in July last year. About seventy five members of the public participated, and since then, site and use review applications have been in process with development review staff. There was a Good Neighbor meeting to answer questions in May, and that brings us to today with an opportunity next month for council to call it up. And if it's approved, technical documents and building permits follow. And then it's important to note that as part of the site and use review application, notice requirements of Section nine four three were met. Signs were posted, mailed, public notice was sent twice, and in each case to approximately four hundred and twenty five property owners within six hundred feet. And then publish, published notice, the meeting was also completed. A brief overview for this evening and a roadmap of where we're headed will go over the context, both the planning and transportation context. We'll look at the site surroundings. And then we'll do a brief summary of the proposed project along with two key issues that are staff's findings of the site and use review criteria, and there's a bit to cover tonight, so I'll do my best to be efficient here. In terms of the broad context, the sites located within Planning Area Two, which means it's the area within the city of Boulder that has adequate urban services and facilities and is expected to continue to accommodate urban. and facilities and is expected to continue to accommodate urban development. So when we zoom in a little bit closer, the site's designated light industrial under the comp plan, it's defined as primarily in industrial parks and residential will be encouraged in appropriate locations. And in this case, through the zoning, which is consistent, it's industrial manufacturing. Again, where residential and other complementary uses may be allowed in appropriate locations. And we determine those appropriate locations through the use review as residential in industrial zoning districts requires a use review, and there's also conditional use criteria for residential in an industrial zone, which we'll discuss a little bit further in key issue two. In terms of previous reviews, the property was annexed to the city in nineteen eighty two with the industrial zoning and a PUD. In nineteen eighty five, the original PUD was amended, and then in nineteen eighty nine, another PUD amendment was approved with phasing that allowed for a total of three hundred and sixty seven thousand square feet of building area on lots two, three, and four, which is the subject site. Refinements were made to that plan through a minor modification later in nineteen eighty nine, and it essentially established the site as it is today, building out a smaller celestial seasonings tea manufacturing facility and retaining those lots two, three, and four is developable lots. In terms of the broader transportation context, the sites located on a collector's street of Spine Road at Gun Barrel Avenue, about a half mile east of sixty third. There's an existing RTD two oh five bus route at Gun Barrel and sixty third, and the two oh five T route along Spine Road had been suspended during the COVID pandemic. That's like many different routes. But according to RTD, the service is set to resume in twenty twenty two. And then approximately a mile and a half north of the site, RTD and C dot along with the Northwest Mayors and Commissioners Coalition are planning multimodal transportation improvements for the diagonal, and that includes bus rapid transit. This was in response to the forty five thousand vehicles per day that travel along the corridor between Longmont and Boulder. So for the plan, a BRT station is anticipated at the intersection of Diagonal and sixty third. Other improvements include express managed lanes as well as State Highway one nineteen bikeway between Boulder and Longmont. It's expected to be physically separated from the roadway and connect to the BRT stations that are planned, and that'll create an ability to commute both by bike and transit. Other cross jurisdictional improvements planned are multi-use path connections for bike and pedestrians that benefit the proposed project and the context. And those that exist today are the solid lines you can see there, and those that are planned are the dash lines. And they include a link in the Lobo or Longmont Boulder Regional Trail that's planned to connect to the existing multi-use path that's within Orchard Creek neighborhood just south of the site. So it's exists here today. It's going to be extended. And then the completion of sixty third and Andres multi-use path that makes the connection from sixty third and Andres to airport for additional off-site bike path to Central Boulder. In terms of the built context, it's varied. To the west, seen on the left, is the celestial seasonings plant, and it's been in that location since the nineties. To the north is the undeveloped industrial manufacturing land that's owned by Medtronic, formerly Covidian Valley Lab, and it employs about twenty four hundred employees. To the east is the Powderhorn condominiums, about four hundred and ninety eight residential units. Also east of the sites, the Hunter Creek condominiums with about a hundred and forty four residential units. To the south is the Orchard Creek Single Family Neighborhood where there's three single family lots that back up to the property. The nine point eight seven acre site itself is vacant. It's undeveloped, and there's a number of existing trees and stands along Spine Road you can see, and also on the south end of the site. There's also Prairie Dogs on the site as well as on adjacent lots one, five, and six, as noted in the memo. Prior to building permit application, the applicant must obtain a permit for any Prairie Dog management techniques. So the proposed project's established on just the three lots that were created in the nineteen eighties lots two, three, and four. And on that, the applicants proposing the two hundred and three, or pardon me, two hundred and thirty residential units. That includes twenty studio apartments, a hundred and seventeen one bedrooms, sixty six two bedrooms, and twenty seven three bedroom units. And that also includes six units planned to be built by Habitat for Humanity. Site amenities include a thousand square foot library annex in the northeast corner, cafe space that's connected to a community art space. And there's also an art lawn on the north along with a community space and a swimming pool at the center within a large open space park and a mobility hub. And all these amenities are to be shared among all the residents. There's also three hundred and nineteen parking spaces where three hundred and fourteen are required, two hundred and sixty six bike spaces where two hundred and sixty three are required. So jumping right into key issue one, consistency with the BBCP is one of the site review criteria, and there's a number of policies that the plan addresses including one point one one jobs house balance where the city encourages residential near employment. Similarly, the site is within Area One, as we noted, where development's anticipated. It's considered to be part of that compact development pattern that's expected in the city. Other policies look opportunities for residential and a mix of uses with higher density and access to transit, as is proposed, and policy eight one seven says that the city will support community facilities such as the planned library annex. Regarding open space, staff finds the site plans arranged around a central open space fine with both passive and aggressive active recreation opportunities with areas for sun and shade, and it meets this criteria through space. Then regarding the circulation criteria, staff finds the proposal consistent with the criteria that seeks to encourage alternative to single occupant vehicles. And in this case, it's the TDM plan spelled out quite a number of measures, including a mobility hub that will include a shuttle service. There's e-bike shares planned, e-scooters, a bike repair station, parking for car and ride sharing services like Uber and Lyft. Buffeted bike lane is planned on spine. Bike parking that I noticed in excess of the requirements, then eco passes are also going to be provided for residents. And looking at the criteria for building design, it asks if the building height, map, scale, orientation, and configuration are compatible with the existing of the area. And it's instructive to look first at the ground level building orientation through a figure ground map of the existing context that utilizes GIS mapping data. It shows the building footprints of the surrounding context with proposal superimposed. And what this helps to illustrate is that there's compatible orientation and configuration of the proposed project with Powderhorn and Hunter Creek condominiums across the street. You can see comparably sized building footprints and orientation of the street. It also shows the compact nature of the proposal with that narrow band of lots two, three, and four, essentially just occupying that east end of the overall property. For the site review criteria related to building height in the context, staff finds the proposed one, two, and three story building masses are compatible and consistent with Powderhorn across the street as well as Hunter Creek that you can see on the bottom left image. And is also noted while architecturally, obviously, there's variation, the massing and scale is consistent and compatible. Similarly, for the three planned residential buildings sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen on the south end of the site, the applicant stepped the building towards the north, presenting two stories nearest the single family. That's also two stories to the south. For building design criteria that's related to human scale design and a vibrant pedestrian experience, the applicant illustrated building frontages along Spine Road that have design details and transparency where it's appropriate, and also faces entrances and windows towards the street, and that's intended to create that activity that's expected at the street level. And then for the criteria related to minimizing shadows and blocking abuse from adjacent properties, staff finds the shadow analysis analysis demonstrates that shadows that would be cast on the shortest day of the year, that's December twenty first at two PM, won't impact to the north or east. Nearest properties are about a hundred and twenty five feet away. And then regarding views, it's important to look at the existing context and along Spine Road. You can see in these photos, the view shed changes as one moves through the space. Views open up and are framed in intersections. And you can also see that there's areas where views are framed between tree stands. And some of those trees grow atop of four to five foot berm that was put in back originally as part of that PUD. So obviously, the the view shed context is varied. There's also a number of existing trees in the median Spine Road. So while the city doesn't regulate private views, the area has not been determined to be an important view corridor as well. And the IM zoning and approved plan for those three large industrial buildings that fill those lots would likely lend a more impactful development typology on the view shed. In that regard, the proposed project with smaller buildings as shown on the left compared to recently built industrial buildings of a comparable size. As the approved buildings is shown on the right, it's evident that the proposed plan would provide probably more view opportunities through the site. Then with regard to key issue two, and to see what the use review criteria, it's important to note that the purpose of the use review in this case is to evaluate the residential use in the context of the industrial zones. And there are six use criteria. We'll touch on a couple of these. The first criteria relates to the rationale for the use, and in that regard, there's four options. Staff finds the criterion two B is relevant as this image of the proposal superimposed in the context demonstrates. It's evident the proposal could help to establish a compatible transition between that higher intensity manufacturing to the west or on the left side of the image and the lower intensity residential uses to the south and east. Similarly, criterion three asks if the proposed development reasonably mitigates the potential negative impacts from the industrial manufacturing uses nearby. And in that regard, the nature of the existing lot pattern creates separation of the planned residential from the tea manufacturing plant by about four hundred and fifty feet, and then from the adjacent Medtronic by about two hundred and thirty feet. And then, as noted in the memo, there's conditional use review criteria for residential in the IM zoning district as well. These are essentially performance standards that staff finds have been met. There's limited retail uses that won't exceed twenty five hundred square feet or stay open later than eleven with that cafe and the library. The floor area ratio for the cafe and libraries under that point four F A R. Forty percent of the required usable open spaces contiguous. The applicant did prepare an environmental assessment did not find evidence of potential onsite pollution or contamination. There's one sixth contiguity to existing residential. There's a the property is greater than two acres in size, and the applicant will be required to sign a declaration of use as well as sign a certificate to ensure sound attenuation measures in the construction. And then finally, staff offers several responses to comments made in public comments to help guide the discussion this evening. With regard to the desire to have an adopted sub-community plan prior to this project's approval, first, it's important to note that a development review application must be processed under the land use zoning and review criteria in place at the time. And then because the city's currently working on the East Boulder Sub-Community Plan, it's likely that selection of and scoping for that next sub-community planning effort probably wouldn't occur until the end of the year. And then it's important to note that while there was support acknowledged for Gun Barrel Plan, sub-community plans are selected by council informed by a staff evaluation of citywide needs and the amount and types of changes taking place in all the city's ten sub-communities that are shown here. And there's been concerns expressed that the project is ultra-high density. It's important to note that within Boulder, there's actually really not any ultra-high density, but that's based on the fact that the city is capped by that fifty five foot height limit unlike other communities. However, for comparison's sake, this is instructive. Density within the recent projects in Boulder Junction, such as the Rev and Thirty Pearl are about sixty dues per acre or roughly two and a half times greater density than the proposed project. Recently built Park Mosaic on Arapahoe, there's about thirty two dues per acre, and then Apex Apartments in Gun Barrel nearby are twenty seven dues per acre. And then this compares to the project that's at about twenty three dues per acre. Then in terms of concern that the site's far from services, staff notes that it's not adjacent to a grocery store per se, but it's in proximity, a mile and quarter to the intersection of sixty third and Lookout. There's a number of retail and personal services there, including King Supers, cafes, insurance agencies, et cetera. And the city's pedestrian plan from twenty nineteen notes that a one-mile walk takes about twenty minutes, about a five-minute bike ride, and that same distance driving is a couple of minutes. So it's it's not adjacent directly to those services, but it is proximate. And then it's important to note the sites located adjacent to a significant number of employment opportunities, which the comp plan one point one, as we noted, jobs housing balance support. So given that context, it's got pretty good proximity. Then regarding the notion that there's segregation, it's really important to note that staff and the city have discussed how actively the city seeks opportunities for affordable housing through the requirement that a quarter of all residential that's built must be dedicated to permanently affordable residential, whether it's cash and lieu, offsite, land donations, or onsite permanently affordable residential, which the applicant's planning. And the affordable buildings on the plan are shown to be adjacent to new market rate buildings, which in essence creates a mixed income neighborhood, and all those amenities that we noted earlier will be shared with all the residents of this proposed new neighborhood. That concludes staff's presentation with a recommendation for approval of the site and use review. Are there any questions for staff?
I'm having trouble with the buttons. Okay, so I'll go ahead and look for hands for questions for staff on this side. John?
Yeah, I hope you can hear me. Good. One of the things that's been mentioned is that there would be a space dedicated for a library in this proposal. And I was wondering, has has that been discussed with the the folks running the libraries to know whether they're interested and ready to move on such a proposal?
Yes, indeed. And David Farnham, looking to see if he's on the call. He's indicated that he's interested and pretty excited about this. He's been talking with the applicant team about the size of the library annex at about a thousand square feet. And so providing that space is actually something that the library gets behind. Again, I'm looking for David Farnham on the call. But again, this is something that they would applaud.
So so the library is committed to accepting this and using it as a library?
That's correct.
The statement of good intentions or something like that?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Sarah? I'm just a quick follow up to John's. Are is the library able to fund the operation of a library? Is that?
Yeah, my understanding is because the applicant's providing the space, the the library actually has a number of books that are available. And operationally, I'm not that familiar with how the library would run it, but in conversations with David Farnham, I understand that, as I say, they're very excited, and evidently is something that they were looking for for the Gun Barrel area.
So maybe 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 the applicant can answer that question for us in a minute. I did have a question about the all the transportation alternatives that you talked about. So there's a lot of, in the future, there will be. So I'm really curious what the timeline is for the RTD and for the BRT and all the other. This will happen in the future because I know that you all made the point, it's only a mile and one point two five miles, but. We keep talking about fifteen minute neighborhoods and being near public transit and. This is neither except in the future, so I'm just sort of curious when that future is going to be here.
Yeah, and my understanding is those are all in the works. It may be that Edward Stafford has more information than I do, but. I believe the applicant's intent is to use the via shuttle service to access. R T D risk irregardless of whether or not there is a B R T station there, but. That is in the works is my understanding. And in conversations with Boulder Chamber as well as Via. They're also very excited about having this implemented and the applicant is committed. Two hundred thousand dollars to get that up and running, so I think that. Having that opportunity to have this essentially be satellite shuttle, I think is is very positive for this particular plan.
But the, so maybe Edward, you can answer some of those, when will these wonderful things happen? Question.
But as Elaine said, there are a lot of variables to it, so we don't really necessarily have those answers. Staff has had conversations with our TV in terms of the resumption of more transit bus services in the Gun Barrel area and they. Do desire to, of course, that will be dependent upon their funding. It's not happening today, but they express the desire to maintain and enhance transit stop at this property. With the intention of in the future resuming some type of transit, it may be different than what it was pre covid pandemic. Especially depending on when the one nineteen project is complete. Unfortunately, I don't on the top of my head have a lot of information on the timing for the one nineteen improvements, you know, there's a variety of moving. Parts there including funding. The recent action, actually, the state legislature will hopefully help some of the funding, making sure that project implementation, but exact timing on that. The transit service that Elaine mentioned in terms of a gun barrel shuttle, they're a financial participant, a larger group that is part of. Yeah, the Chamber and others that are looking at putting in a service. And my understanding is looking potentially as early as next year or the year thereafter, if the funding comes together. This project has voluntarily committed funding to that. Because of those things, I would just point out when we looked at the traffic impact study for this and they. Applied a trip reduction, which is quite normal in Boulder. And in fact, they applied one that's probably on the lower side, but we also asked them to do an analysis with the trip reduction. In case the transit services aren't as robust as we would like to see in case these other. Plate pieces come into play and when they applied that, it did not change the outcome of that traffic impact study. Or the ability for the the area to be able to handle that vehicular traffic, so we did want to look at that to ensure, but of course, we would. Much prefer as it falls along the lines of the T N P, the Transportation Master Plan, to see the continued multimodal and the enhanced additional access that's not. Vehicular or single log vehicle.
So I appreciate all that information, can I just like? What is the city in control of? That it can tell us when. That will, whatever component that is will be completed.
You know, actually, of all of those, none of them has the city in the final decision seat. Partners on some of the projects and of course, you know, a member of the R T D district on those transit bases, but we are. Not the final decider or the final financer for a hundred percent of any of those three items.
Okay, I appreciate that information.
Lisa, did you have a question?
Yeah. This is a tricky project for me, so I I want to ask some questions of staff, hopefully without making staff. Feel overly sad because I think you did a very nice analysis and have worked hard on this. But I'm specifically looking at attachment A. Analysis of the proposal with site review criteria and I'm specifically looking at B V C P policies. And there are several of of these BBC policies that are called out. As addressed by the proposal that I personally don't. Find compelling evidence for being supported by the proposal. And I'll say that that my concerns are potential concerns because I wouldn't say that I I have a specific position yet. On the project overall are largely location dependent. And then how it's. Served and resource, so looking at attachment A on, I believe, page twenty one. Jobs housing balance, sure, compact development pattern, yeah. Um, mixed use and higher density development, perhaps within the development itself, I wouldn't describe Gun Barrel in that way generally. Commitment to a walkable and accessible city. Again, not not really, I mean, I I can't imagine living up there without a car and I don't know who would. I think there have been major improvements and I really appreciate what the applicant did around environmentally sensitive urban design, but. Again, just by virtue of the location, it's a bit challenged in that way. Energy efficient land use, again, because of the way that people are going to get around, I just that that's a hard one to sell. You know, so yeah, I I guess I just wanted to invite staff not not to make it a. Criticism or attack on your hard work, but. You know, if there's anything that you would like to highlight or call out. That might, you know, shift. My reaction to seeing some of these things listed as things that are supported, I you know, I just wanted to give you a platform to do that that might. Change my view, you know, some of these things make sense like jobs, housing balance. Mixure of housing types, I think, I think the applicant did a really nice job of calling out some of that. Support for community facilities with a potential library, like I I see. Good things too, but just some of this. Again, I think because of the location of the site are just challenging to address and I'd like to give you the opportunity to. Attempt to shift my view.
You bet, and and so we both acknowledge jobs, housing balance is key and critical. The compact development pattern, generally speaking, things that we see that come through. Are going to be part of that compact development pattern, in other words, the city. You can't go out because of the open space, so. Where we have area one designated, that's where the compact development pattern is established. The thing about this that is also in and of itself a compact pattern is that it's a fairly narrow band of. Lots two, three and four that are occupied by residential, so it's not spread across the entire. Celestial seasonings, lots one through six. It's in just those two, three and four. With regard to mixed use. There is no definition per se of mixed use in the industrial zone, so the fact that they have. Added things like a library annex and a cafe and an art space. Goes a long way to saying that it has a mix of uses. And then certainly the higher density development wouldn't be possible unless they did these. Transportation improvements. Particularly T D M strategies that allow for bike share. Car share, van pooling, the Via Shuttle. And then the with regard to the the planning that's out there, in all cases, when we look at. Opportunities for growth and development. It needs to come into alignment with what's planned and so back to deferring to. Sarah Silver's question about what's the city in control of? Our city's comp plan and and transportation. Master plans highlight areas where it's expected for. Transportation improvements to occur, so that's part of that. Goal is to link these pieces from this site to other pieces in the city. And then the other piece about. One point two four miles to King Supers. There's many parts of the city that aren't nearly in that close proximity to the level of support and services that are. Within that King Super Shopping Center area, so. Because it's not directly adjacent to a grocery store, I don't think you could say that it's not. About that type of higher density development. In terms of energy efficient land use, again, it's relatively compact on the site. Energy efficient building design. That compact and higher density actually is helps create a greater efficiency for. Development as well as being able to be mobility within the development. And then. Again, balancing housing supply with employment base. Clearly, that's one of our key issues that the city has faced and we've had that same conversation and other. Applications, but hopefully that helps to address some of your questions, I'm I'm happy to to jump in more if I take another look at my analysis.
That that is helpful and thank you, yeah, I think I think there's a lot to like about it, I I just. Yeah, I I think a lot of my hesitancies around the specific location rather than the concept or the design or any of that, which I think is very well thought out. Thank you.
Okay, any more questions for staff? Peter and then John.
Hello Elaine, thank you for the presentation. There was a comment you made about the amenities being shared throughout the site and I wanted to just confirm that and understand it. When I toured diagonal crossing, for example, the idea of. The nice pool on the north end and then the little tiny pool in the middle. This is different than that arrangement.
That's correct, and and I would ask that we have the applicant address that as well, but. My understanding is it's intended to be shared throughout the the neighborhood and. I I think that there was some concern that was raised about u- using diagonal crossing as a model, but. In fact, the intent is to have all these different amenities for this new neighborhood that's proposed, so. I would also defer to the applicant Kurt, if you have any thoughts on this as well. I saw you pop on.
Sure, good evening, planning board, Kurt Fernhaver, Director of Housing and Human Services. Thanks for your question, Peter. So, two of the different, what were the differences between di-? The diagonal development and in this one. The one on the diagonal was actually an annexation and it wasn't. It wasn't required to go through inclusionary housing ordinance. Because it was an annexation which was done many years ago. And so the amount of affordable housing was different and some of the I H rules also did not apply. So in our in our I H. Ordinance, it indicates that. There must be access to amenities. By all residents, so that would apply to this site generally. And so I think that's the approach that the applicant has taken. To to be in line with that aspect of the I H ordinance.
Thank you for clarifying that, Neil, on some beginning, remember that now, how that one was different, how it came to be, so there's a. Thank you.
Thanks for joining us, Kurt and Edward as well, appreciate that. Any more questions for staff, John, I'm sorry, you had your hand up earlier.
Yeah. Two, two things, one, in in your response to to Peter's question, you just mentioned that the pools and facilities would be open to the entire neighborhood. Does that include the people living across the street? I mean, we're talking about a bigger neighborhood than just this development, I presume, is that correct?
Well, just to clarify, when I said neighborhood, I meant this new proposed neighborhood, I understand that the Powderhorn condominiums as well as. The Hunter Creek have their own amenities, including a pool at Powderhorn, so I think the idea was to have it be. For the residents of this site.
So, so are you anticipating that it would be fenced and gated to keep non residents out?
You know, I think that's a great question for the applicant, although we don't have plans that illustrate. A fence around it, that may be a refinement in tech doc, but. I think the point is it's intended for the residents of this new neighborhood.
The asker of the question, that's how I interpreted it as well.
We can ask the applicant for more information too about that, about the access, right?
Yeah. Right, when we talk, I mean, we talk about the neighborhood, to me, the neighborhood implies. More than just this development, but anyway, the other question that I was wondering about is. Can you quantify how much land is zoned for industrial? That remains in the city and will continue to be available after this proposal? Now, and as as you might know.
Yeah.
Ask, and so I'm I'm interested in ensuring that we. Maintain our ability to have industrial activity in in Boulder.
Understood, I don't have that off the top of my head, we could probably look it up for you. One point about this particular site is it represents a quarter of the overall celestial seasonings industrial parcel. There's quite a bit of land, as you know, out at Fifty Fifth and Arapahoe. As part of that East Boulder Sub Committee Plan. And there was the intent in the recent. B V C P update from twenty fifteen to look at infilling industrial parcels with residential, looking at opportunities. Given the fact that we. Are in need of residential in the community, so I I can see if I can round that up for you, John, while the applicant's presenting.
Thank you.
Sarah?
Elaine, can you, can you sort of walk us through the prairie dog issue, not not the big prairie dog issue, the specifics related to this site? Parent, obviously, there's a prairie dog management. Plan that all applicants who are. Dealing with prairie dogs have to abide by, but can you sort of give us a a quick thumbnail of what that is?
I'm going to suggest Val Matheson, do just that, since she's the expert.
Thank you, Val, welcome.
Hi, hi, Planning Board, Val Matheson, Urban Wildlife Conservation Coordinator. I think the best way to illustrate. What happens is the premise of the six step decision making process that. Properties have to go to in the city of Boulder in circumstances like this where there's going to be development. And the six step decision making process is looking at the site and seeing what is the least invasive. Action that could happen from taking no action. At the first step and then moving up to potentially moving. A few of the prairie dogs or some of the colony to relocating the whole colony somewhere else. And if none of those. Mitigation opportunities are available. And there are three criteria that are met, one of them being the site is going to be developed. Then the applicant can apply for a lethal control permit for lethal removal of those prairie dogs.
Okay, so, go ahead, Lisa.
Um, I know I read this at some point, Val, and I just don't remember my numbers. Could you remind us if if it's at your fingertips? When we attempt to move either individuals or a colony, what percentage can be expected to survive and how likely is it that that colony will successfully establish somewhere else?
Yeah, that's a really good question and I don't, not only do I have not those numbers at my fingertips, but not have those numbers. Generally, what we see is the relocation initially is very successful, so taking prairie dogs. From one location, establishing artificial burrows into a new location. Establishing food and an enclosure in the new location with a food supply. So those initial days are very successful in getting the prairie dogs to the new site. What happens then is those enclosures, which. Provide food and protection for those newly relocated prairie dogs are lifted off. And when that happens. There's a suite of of exposure predators. You know, that are coming and depredating those prairie dogs at a much higher rate than you'd see in a normal established prairie dog colony. And so there are estimates of, you know. Fifty percent after the depredation and and the the colony is getting established in the new site. But those are estimates in the city, we haven't done. Kind of long term relocation studies to see over time, where are those individuals that were relocated?
And then one other follow up question, my understanding is it's it's very challenging to. Locate and then utilize alternative sites, even if you know you're you want to relocate, is is that accurate?
Yeah, that's absolutely true, and you know, I have received a few requests. As the city of Boulder, as a landowner. As the city of Boulder, as a landowner, do we have any sites from other private landowners outside of Boulder, um other municipalities in the Front Range? So the demand um is much greater for a relocation site than the availability of those relocation opportunities.
Which then I assume would tend to push toward lethal control because there isn't anywhere to move them.
That's correct.
Okay. All right, uh thank you so much, Val, for explaining that. Any more questions uh on that or any other subject before we take a break? Okay, well, thank you. Thank you so much to staff for um the thorough uh analysis, and we'll be hearing from the applicant shortly. In line with our new approach, we'll take a a short break uh and reconvene at seven fifteen. Thank you.
Jean or Cindy, I'm not sure who's in control of the screen sharing. This is Bill. Um if you could allow me to share screen. It's that's.
I think you should have that capability, but let me.
Tell me it's disabled, so, sorry. Now, while that's while that's happening, um I did understand from staff that uh. There was a question about whether we would need more time due to the complexity, and I think our intent is to stay within. We may go a minute over just by trying to talk slow and take time to make sure it's understandable, but uh we'll try to stay as close to that fifteen minutes as possible, if that's all right. With the board chair.
Yeah, I was going to ask if uh fifteen minutes would be enough time, and I know this is a a large project, so um I think we're fine, uh you know, going. As far as twenty minutes as we've done with other projects that are this large, so.
I don't, I don't believe we'll use up that much time, so.
All right, good.
Oh, now I can share, so we're we're just about there.
Before you get started, I do want to just apologize to the folks on the meeting for what showed up on the chat. We typically, and at the beginning of the meeting, we had it set to. Have chat only go to um panelists um for this exact reason, to try to make sure that that doesn't happen, so. Again, I'm um I'm sorry that that happened, and I hope that that, I hope we don't have any more of that tonight.
Yeah, thank you. Uh thanks so much for uh getting on top of that and I'll add my. Oh, I'm John, you're echoing, I'm just gonna mute you. Um yeah, I'll I'll add my apologies to the public for for that. Um it's a uh. We don't use the chat for anything, meaning, you know, anything related to the projects, so. If 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 you want to, you can just not look at the chat. Because uh you know, Jean will call on people when when they're uh up for speaking, so as long as you know you're on the list, uh there's really no reason that. Unless you just have a logistical question to go to the chat, so sorry about that. And again, thanks to staff for for jumping on that. So Gina, are we okay to proceed? Got everybody back with us? Okay, great. Uh so um that's the time where we'll hear from the applicant. I see we have a number of people from Coburn Coburn here with us, so. My handing it over to you, to you, Bill?
Yes, thank you. Um Matt will get us underway and then we'll jump into the project. And did we lose Matt?
That's Matt. Oh, just as you said that, Matt disappeared.
Yeah. We'll give him a second and then we'll just, we can um. Take it away without him. Well, if you'd like us to get started, we can do so, Mr. Chairman.
Let's see, we've got everybody back here, so if you're okay, I'm starting this off, we'll welcome Mac back in when he gets here.
Sounds good. Okay, well, uh thank you, Planning Board, for um having us along for the ride tonight. What Matt was going to say was that we're we're really saying, oh, here's Matt, so I'm gonna turn it over to Matt.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Can.
Can you hear me, Val?
Yes. I can hear you.
Yeah, the Spine Road Project we'll discuss tonight is the third low and middle income community my partner Andy Allison. And I have worked on together in Boulder. We believe our past projects have benefited the community. And have been received favorably by the community as well. Our larger team has worked on many more projects in Boulder. We're excited to discuss this effort with you tonight, and we'd also like to thank um Elaine and staff for all the hard work that they've put into reviewing our project thus far. With that, I'll turn it over to Danica.
Thanks, Pat. Um as we know, we have a housing challenge in this community, and this project will make a significant dent in the this part of Boulder. In which there are currently only four to five affordable for sale homes and one rental home. Um as mentioned by staff and several planning board members, we have a jobs, housing imbalance with sixty thousand daily incommuters. And so this will help bring people closer to the jobs um that they may currently work in and the services that they currently provide for our community. Excellent. And throughout the course of this project, we've done a significant amount of community engagement. So Elaine mentioned we had a good neighbor meeting with sixty-seven attendees over the course of that meeting and after, we answered over ninety questions during. Via email and in the course of that meeting, we've held a project website. Um you can see the URL right there, and we also outreach, had did outreach to over thirty businesses and local groups, nonprofits and organizations across the community. Um including people who are interested in living in this housing in the future.
Bill Hollick with Coburn Architecture. We'll zoom around. Thank you for bearing with us. So. One of the, one of the questions is, is the site appropriate for residential? And staff went through their analysis of why it is. Some other reasons include, this is the continuation of a much-loved residential fabric that exists right now, and that's the green here. So um that fits in really well, the existing residential fabric. Uh it is also served by um bus routes and bike routes, and we'll get into that more later. I know there were some questions about that. The site has changed and um and really been enhanced considerably since the last time you saw the concept plan. Uh just to give a quick overview of where we stand before we get into those changes, this is the current site. It's organized around a large central area, the Central Park. And then there's a north-south greenway that runs left to right on the page here. That really connects the far north side to the far south side, and that's what everything opens on to, so. Affordable residents, market rate residents, uh commercial users, the mixed use, all of those open on to the central green, and that becomes the common space. That's like the front door. Or the uh the main street for the project, so that's where the community happens. We've really worked on creating a complete spine road. Right now, it's a one-sided street. And we've worked with staff transportation to make it safer and more completed from an urban standpoint, so we've. Added the residential buildings on this side of the street to create that urban room. And staff, um through their suggestions, we've incorporated the seven-foot buffer bike lane that's noted in the low-stress street network plan that goes down spine. We've put in the the parallel parking to help buffer that eight-foot tree lawn, five-foot sidewalk, so. In staff's opinion, that's really going to change the traffic patterns on this part of spine and slow and calm traffic and make it safer. There is one internal setback variance on the on the project. With that exception, every other part of the project meets the city of Boulder code. We're not asking for anything. There's no density variances, no height variances. Open space parking, there's no setback variances to the neighbors, it all meets code, so that's an important to note while you're looking at this. When we came to the concept plan, project looked a lot different. Uh you had really great feedback, so council. Uh we had a lot of meetings with the neighbors who also had really good feedback, housing advocacy groups, people that might live here someday. We did a lot of outreach. And staff, of course, was key in all of that, so I'm gonna walk you through the changes that were made. Primarily the ones that planning board requested, so you can see how you helped guide this project to where it is. The original site plan is on the top and the new one's on the bottom. That's true for all of these slides. So one of the comments of planning board had was, hey, if you reduce density, you can add a bunch of things that are missing from the plan right now. You felt that the plan being primarily residential. Could be improved um in a number of ways, so we've done that. Originally, the plan was almost two hundred and seventy units. It's now two hundred and thirty, so we've lost close to forty units. We've also made the the building smaller, less square footage, less footprint, that's made the site more permeable. And it allowed us to do a bunch of things to the site that you were also looking for, so you'll see some of those coming up next. The first is the open space. We heard from planning board, council, neighbors, everyone really, that is critically important that the people that live here have really great places to to recreate, socialize and live outside. So the original plan on the top was, had this idea of this green spine, and that's been maintained, but it's been augmented tremendously. So we've turned a spine from a north-south that's left to right on the page. And then in addition to that, we've added this large common green area in the middle. Again, everything opens up onto this, so this is for everyone. Um and it's not just green space, we've programmed it heavily. It's also much larger than is required by the city of Boulder, so it's three-quarters of an acre or so bigger than what's expected by the code. And it's heavily programmed, so again, we have small areas like game lawn and in a fire pit for socialization. We have big areas like the recreation field. Uh which is here, you know, think of this as more for larger groups or for more active recreation. We have a sculpture garden and we have community gardens. We have uh like a uh smaller areas like this one, which is a place for kids to play, a natural play area. In doing all of this, it creates this this really strong sense of outdoor place, and this is where the community comes together, right? So everyone, market affordability. The the people that are using the um commercial uses like the cafe and the art studio library, this is for everyone. So this is where the community. Really forges into one neighborhood in in place, so we're really excited about these changes. Great direction from all of you, we appreciate it. You also had comments and considerations about the types of units and the types of uses. Again, it was primarily residential, you saw it last time, so the developers have worked really hard to bring other uses and other unit types into the project. For affordable units, we have affordable apartments, it's shown in red. We also have townhomes. All of these are deed restricted, so we have for rent in blue, and in partnership with Habitat for Humanity, we're able to put together townhomes that are for sale. So that's really exciting. It's a different unit type, it serves a different type of of user, different type of resident, and that's going to add a lot of diversity into the site. For market rate, we have market rate apartments. We also have these live-work uh units that are a new add. And so the idea here is that somebody who's maybe a sole proprietor or somebody running a small business or an incubator space. That person does not need to both rent a place to live or buy a place to live and also rent a commercial space. They can have one unit. And one uh cost, and they can do their um, you know, their their business activities from there. The other really cool thing it does is it puts a non-residential use on to spine, so it starts to charge the street. We have the live-work units next to the leasing office. Further down, we have the library annex, so there's a variety of uses on spine as you walk along. And then the, oops, sorry, then the units themselves or the uses themselves, as was noted, this is a corner library, it's very similar, actually, it's exactly the same concept as what's in North Boulder for the Nobo Library that's been so successful. Uh so that's exciting. And the cafe, coffee shop, which was specifically requested by neighbors, planning board and council, the idea of a coffee shop for the neighbors to walk in. And these art spaces. Um and keep in mind that these are all subsidized commercial spaces. Uh we have this focus in the city that we're trying to get to affordable commercial. These are subsidized commercial leases, so that's pretty cool. Fitness and Wellness Center with the pool is open to everyone in the neighborhood, market rate or affordable, and the mobility hub is open to the entire neighborhood, so. John, to your point, not just the people that live here, but the whole, the whole surrounding neighborhood, that is for everyone who lives around the property. We'll get into that in more detail. One of the other comments that planning board had was parking. Uh we were trying to hide the parking behind the larger buildings that were around the outside. And they come out and was, well, you know what, that's not really working. What we need to do is spread that parking out, um bring it to the code requirements, not overpark it and um disperse it. So it's, all of those things have happened. It's under tucked under buildings, it's under carports, it's pulled apart, so we have the center green spine, and you can see the required metrics. We're required to have about three hundred and sixteen spaces, and we have just about that, so there's no parking reduction, but it's also not overparked. Sustainability was a question that a number of you brought up, and we didn't know. It was very early in the process, so we've developed that further. One of the suggestions. From a number of people was uh renewable energy, so all of the community spaces and the EV chargers that are near them are all powered by uh solar. We have green roofs over a number of the, a bunch of the carports, which is really cool. I'm excited to be able to do that, and we have the community garden, so people can grow their own food. We also have the mobility hub, and that is a big sustainability element focused on getting people out of cars, and we talk about the buildings all the time. It's very important to remember transportation. According to the most recent City Boulder Transportation Study, the average commute is fifteen miles. All the people that will live here, since these are new Boulder units, are currently commuting into Boulder. So they're trading a fifteen-mile commute to one of three or four miles to Central Boulder or less if they live in Gun Barrel. You just do the math and assume that none of these people get out of the cars. They all stay in their cars and they drive into Boulder. It's still taking something on the order of more than two million vehicle miles traveled off the road every year. There is nothing that we can do to these buildings that even comes close to touching that sustainability impact, so we're really excited about that. From a transportation standpoint, we're really focused on the, not just what we just talked about, but also Elaine and some of the board members were just asking about. How do we deal with the last mile? And here's a map of that last mile. So number five is the King Super Shopping Center. As Elaine said, it's about a mile and a quarter away. It's very similar to the distance from a grocery store of Holiday Drive-In, which we reference all the time because everybody knows that really well. That's just under a mile away from Lucky's. An important note is that the Lucky Shopping Center has very limited services compared to the King Super Shopping Center here or the Safeway Shopping Center. In North Boulder, which is more like two and a half miles away from Holiday. But how can we get people that mile? How can we make that really easy for people or to get to these closer things, one, two, three and four, which are restaurants, who are more like a half mile away? So we focused on that. Again, as Elaine said, it takes about twenty minutes to walk to King Super, but it only takes four or five minutes to bike. It only takes two or three minutes to do an e-bike there. So that's what we're focused on. We're focused on getting people that that last little bit distance in a very easy way. And it's a common problem in cities because you often have things that are a little too far away for walking, but you don't want people to have to get in their car. So here we are. We have the bike and the e-bike center. We have a car share for people that maybe don't want to use or don't want to own a car. They can, they can borrow a car. There's a rideshare loading area for Uber and Lyft, focus on the same thing. There's this really cool thing that we have with these two enterprise van shuttles dedicated to the community. So the community members themselves get to get together and say, okay, where do three, four, five, ten, twelve of us want to go? That van pool can bring them into Central Boulder, it can take them shopping, and that's something that the neighbors program together, again, affordable market rate. We have the commuter shuttle, which is this thing that the chamber is proposing, which will go from Central Boulder to Gun Barrel, and again, the project contributed a large amount of financial um backing to that, so that that can happen. And we have really, maybe as important as anything else, this idea of this transit and bike route kiosk. There's a map. It tells you how to get around. You know, obviously, the RTD routes are confusing in COVID. You know, obviously, the RTD routes are confusing in COVID. They're always confusing to people. How do you get to the right bike lanes? And they're all listed there on the map, right next to the bike repair area. So it's easier for people to find their way. And when we look at those connections, we talked about it in a little bit of detail. There's some question about what's coming and what's here now. And that's a really good question. We've been focused on that a lot. Sarah, I think you just brought that up. It's important to note two things. The first is that the the coming connections, if you ask the county transportation, they're coming. They're half-funded, the the already, the planning's already funded and and they're exciting. And I'll hit some of them. And then I'll talk about the current connections. So that dark blue is a lowboat trail. The cottonwood is complete. So the the solid blue line that leaves J Road and heads south gets you into center the center of Boulder. There's currently a bike lane on spine and on J that gets you to the cottonwood trail. People ride it all the time. However, there is planned to be an improvement and the county just determined that their preferred route will be, as we've shown here, following spine and J, but almost completely off-road. So you will have a complete off-road path in the Boulder. They're committed to it. They it was part of the report in the beginning of July on the transportation tax and how the county is using it through 2024. So it's coming, but it functions very well as it is. That cottonwood trail is very heavily used. We also have bus stops around the site. And yes, the one right in front, the two oh five T in the J are not running right now due to COVID. Again, as RTD told the staff, they're planning on bringing it back. But we do have a more robust route a half mile away at the corner of Sixty-third and Gunbarrel. That's about, as I said, about a half mile away. That's a half mile is generally what we use in planning to say that's what people will walk. But again, people which may choose not to do that. But again, that's why we have these alternative methods. The E scooter that was up there before is a perfect alternative for hopping on, zipping over to the bike, to the bus station, locking it up, getting it when you get back. Same with the bike, same with the e-bike. Again, RTD is committed to improving the bus stop right out in front of the site. But we're not relying on future improvements to make it work. This mobility hub, which again is open to the entire neighborhood, is designed to make it work. One quick note about walkability. It's been brought up. The walkability score is nineteen in the single-family home neighborhood to the south and twenty-four in Powderhorn next to us. The formula is public for walk for walk score. When we put in the coffee shop, the corner library, the art gallery, the art studio and the park, that walkability score will rise to fifty, which means it's now per walk score semi-walkable. Is it perfect? Is it ninety? It isn't, but it's a huge improvement. And it's not just improvement for these people that are going to live here. It's an improvement for the entire neighborhood. So we're excited about that as well. You guys brought up the architecture thought the exist or the what we originally proposed is on the left. New is on the right. You thought it was too modern and should be more residential. And we went back and thought about it and really heard you. You're right. The gable roofs, more warm materials, painted lapboard siding. We brought that in. Now, of course, we're still using a little bit of a more commercial architecture to announce the things like the cafe and the library because they're special. But generally, the architecture is much more residential, really focused on the first floor, walkability, human scale. And and we think it's much better than it was when we when we brought it to you the first time. So we appreciate that feedback. And lastly, we've had it. One of the things that planning board said to us when we came the first time, it really took to heart, was what can the project bring to the neighborhood? That's a great question. And at the same time, the city of Boulder is running the compatible or the the community benefit conversation. And while we know the process is still being worked out, the goals have become pretty clear. So we created this list and we kept adding to this list every time somebody was able to get something in here that brought something to the neighborhood. So this is a partial list, but it's really important. So all these new neighborhood services, like I say, they completely change what's available in the neighborhood, not just the people who are going to live here, but for everybody. And then subsidized affordable commercial space, which is a direct request or goal of the community benefit program. All the new neighborhood amenities like the community gardens, a transportation hub, the mobility solutions. Now there's a park. There's all these outdoor social activities and making spine a true street. I think Lisa, you had asked, how does this fit the sustainable development pattern? Well, it's going to take millions of miles of vehicle miles traveled off the road every year and putting people that currently, there's no way they can access transit and get to their jobs. Now they at least have the choice and it can continue to get better. So that's supporting that city goal. We talked about the mobility solutions. And just to finish, the biggest goal of the community benefit is onsite affordable housing. And this is done here. It's really rare. As the city pointed out, this is only the third project that's brought it to this level and proposed it on site. So we're really excited about that. So look forward to questions. The project's gotten an enormous enormous amount of improvement incorporated into it because of your feedback and we look forward to talking to you about it. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill and and everyone from the team who presented on behalf of the applicant. And I appreciate you highlighting things that changed. Changed since concept review, I think, that helped the board. So let's go ahead and open it up for questions from the board to the applicant. Who wants to lead us up? Peter, you want to go first?
Thank you, applicant team. Bill, can you take me through that calculation on the two million saved miles? I was tracking you and then I lost you for a minute or second on that. I know you're counterpoint to the sustainability, but I was trying to pick it up on the actual mobility piece itself, how you got there.
Yeah, so I won't go through the the full calculus, but just that's a very conservative number. And it's just based on comparing the average daily commute for the City Boulder Transportation Report that was last published at fifteen miles versus where people will be going if they live here, which is Boulder or Gunbarrel. So that's closer to, say, four miles each way. So the difference is ten miles each trip for each person. And if you multiply that by the number of persons and the number of workdays over the year, you get well over two million, more like three or three and a half or something like that. So we're trying to be very conservative about it, but it's it's the change of location for people. Again, to Elaine's point, when we can put people within the city boundaries and take them out of the sixty thousand in commuters a day, it completely changes the patterns of energy use from a transportation standpoint. And just one last note, that was recently noted as a a new focus of the city when they were just discussing it. So that is something that City of Boulder is going to try to take into consideration moving forward because transportation has such a massive impact on sustainability.
Okay, thanks. That's supposed this is supposing that these people wouldn't otherwise live in the city. And by putting them in the city, you're capturing the delta. Thank you.
Correct, because since those units don't exist, these people by definition don't live in the city of Boulder now.
Great. John?
Yeah, thanks for that explanation. I I would say there's several heroic assumptions in there, but I I don't think this is the place to debate it. But I I wondered if you could quantify the participation of this project in the in several of the other transportation projects that you mentioned, such as the the proposal with the chamber and and some of the others that that have been mentioned. But be interested to learn a little bit more detail about what's actually going on there.
Yeah, we can. We can hit some of those. I can hit some of those and more details required. Andy Allison is here and can speak to some as well. So the mobility hub inclusions themselves will be done by the project. So the E scooter share done by the project, e-bike share and bike share done by the project. All the short-term parking spaces done by the project. The enterprise shuttles, again, that's funded by the project. So that's not reliant on anyone else. As soon as the people move in, those two shuttles, the column van shares or shuttle shuttle shares for the neighborhood are provided by the project. Eco-passes for everyone in the project, again, provided by the project. So they're not reliant on anyone else. The only thing I believe that I mentioned, I'm looking at the list to make sure I'm not I'm making not misspeaking, and I'm not. The only thing that's reliant on any outside source that I mentioned is the Chamber Shuttle. And if you want more information on that, I think that there's people here who can speak to it and Andy Allison can also speak to it. But this project is contributing to that. Do you want to add to that?
Oh, sure.
Okay.
Zoom in on me?
We're zooming in on you.
Got me? Hi, Andy Allison. Yeah, so thanks, John, for the question. The so we're funding the shuttles first year. The this is the Via and Chamber Shuttle. I know there's some people signed up in the public participation who are going to speak to that in in a little bit more detail. But it is a partnership between us and the first year of getting Via and the Chamber going. It's something they've been they were working on for a long time and it it died down a little bit when COVID hit. So they were pretty excited to to get it back going. I I think that, once again, I think people with more details will speak to it in the public participation. I know that Andrea is here from the Chamber. If we need more than what he's going to say in public participation, I'm sure he's happy to speak to it.
And just to note, that's the only thing that this project is not fully in control of. Everything that we just mentioned is available for the neighborhood as well. So on those bike shares, you share scooters, all that. The wider neighborhood can access as well. And I guess the person driving is having a hard time for us.
Hey, Bill.
Yeah, if I can just follow up. Yeah, in in a similar way to that, the joint effort with the Chamber, can you describe what you're proposing with the subsidized rents for the cafe and and library and maybe art gallery and the other things you have? What what is arrangement that you're actually proposing in terms of subsidy and so on?
It's it's back to me. Thanks, John. So the all three are are fairly similar. The cafe and the art space will have no rent. So we're going to develop that space and we're going to work with our property management group and some a lot of art groups that are out there. And and it's going to be utilized by them for both this community and the surrounding communities. And they're not going to have rent to pay on that art space. Same with the cafe. The cafe is going to be operated by Bridge House through their community table kitchen and their ready-to-work program. And we're going to give them this space free of rent. That is the same arrangement that we discussed with the library and David Barnum, that we would develop the space, the city would not would have would sign a lease, but it would be zero rent. And they could use their resources to to operate it.
And so 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 the users would be responsible for maintaining and cleaning and so on. But it's it's just the basic rent that you would make available to them.
I'm sorry, did you say library or the other or all the spaces?
Well, I I'm just asking if that's true for all of them.
Yes.
That the tenants are.
Yeah, yeah, that's the same.
Great. Sarah?
Thanks so much. A question about rent affordability in the permanently affordable areas apartments. We know how it works with BHP, but how does it work when it's not BHP? And how are those affordable rents set and raised or or not?
Thanks, Andy Allison, again. And I I know there's Curtis is also available. But so the rents are set at up to sixty percent AMI, which is recorded in a covenant and an onsite agreement. And those covenants are are the same that the housing authority would sign. They're the same for any any owner that's going to restrict the rents. And Kurt wants to expand on that. I'm sure he has more details.
Yeah, go ahead, Kurt.
Thank you, Sarah. So so Andy is correct. There there is no difference between the the covenants between this development or any other private development for affordable housing and our housing authority. The one difference you would note is in the housing authority through other mechanisms and approaches, they're able to often rent at lower than sixty percent AMI. But the covenants as well as our inclusionary housing ordinance are are set at sixty percent. So that's that's what they would be required to meet. The the rent increases are the are the same for all affordable units across the city. It's a calculation that's done annually and it's it's related to the change in the area median income.
So can I, Kurt, can I just follow up? Wait, come back?
I'm I'm always here. I just may not be on.
So the the implication of what you said is that the permanently affordable housing will likely be sixty percent AMI and not below that. Is that correct?
That's what I would expect. And there's been similar for the housing developments created in the city that are that are like that. It doesn't prevent them from renting at lower AMIs. And sometimes developers decide to do that because it it creates some diversity in rents, which is actually helpful for them. But my our expectation would be that they would be at that level.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep.
Great. Any other questions for the applicant at this point? John?
Yeah, thanks. So Mr. Holicky mentioned that the facilities that are being constructed in connection with this, the health and park and those sorts of athletic-type facilities would be open to the to the full neighborhood, including people not living in this development, but but in Powderhorn and so on. And I was just wondering to what degree they would also have access to the transportation arrangements that you're describing.
Okay, so Matt, I'll start and kick it over to you. For the transportation, there that's open to everyone. You know, bike share, E bikes, car share, they're they're done through paying through providers to bring them in. And the third-party providers can accept it from anyone. So they're open to everybody. The the health is a little different. I'll turn it over to Matt for that.
Yeah, the the pool and the fitness and there's a common area amenity that would be open to everyone within our development. So that would include the affordable housing as well as the market rate portion of the development. But it would not be open to folks in the community that were not not part of this development. Just as, you know, our residents wouldn't have have access to the pool at Powderhorn either.
Oh, so I misunderstood what Mr. Holicky was describing then. So are you expecting to build fences and so on to ensure that 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 is is the case?
I can. Yeah, I can jump in on that. So there is one code requirement fence.
Yes, we would set up a fence and then there'd be a key fob access and electronic access that would make sure that residents from the market as well as affordable communities. What? Can you hear me? Am I?
We had a little. We had a little cross-talk map between you and Bill, but we can hear you.
Okay, yeah, there would be fencing and we would have controlled access through a key fob system so that the key fob system would be available to the affordable community as well as the market rate portion of the community. But that would, you know, prevent residents from other places from accessing those amenities.
And just to be clear, John, just for clarity, that is a code requirement from the National Building Code. You're required to fence every pool because the the concern is that a kid could fall in that, you know, that's not supposed to be there. So every pool built in Boulder has to be fenced. The rest of the facility, you know, the open space, all the, you know, the art art sculpture garden and the general park, none of that is fenced. We are only talking about the pool.
Thank you.
All right. Great. I'm glad you brought that up, John. I knew that that was an open question. Any more questions at this point for the applicant? If not, we'll go ahead and take another very short break. Let's try to be back here at seven fifty-four. Good to stretch our legs, everyone, as well. And then we'll for the public after that, we'll be going into the public comments. So get ready to start listening for your name from Gene when we reconvene.
Hey, Bill, can you stop screen sharing, please? Thank you.
Their benefit, what they're actually proposing in terms of the transportation and rental arrangements. And so at some point, it would be good to get staff's opinion and thoughts about that as to how how it might be formally arranged and and established. But, you know, that could come at a later point, but at some point I'd like to get staff thoughts on that.
Elaine, did you want to cover that now?
Sure. So for the via mobility, they have a condition of approval that requires that $200,000. So that's part of the conditions. And then in terms of all the other components, they're part of the site review. And so because they're shown on the plan and the written statement, they become part of the site review. And if they're not shown, then it's modification process.
Can I just follow up on that? I'm sorry, Lisa. Follow up on that. So in reading the application, the the $200,000, which is very generous, is is required within a time, assuming a timeframe. But if that timeframe isn't met, is the $200,000 still a requirement or is that once that 18 months is gone?
So is the. If Edward's on, I'd like Edward to jump in because he he actually had that conversation with Hella about how he would set that up.
Good evening, Sarah. Great question. And you're correct. If the conditions are not met in terms of when those dollars would be used by the other parties for that shuttle, then they would be returning. No longer be responsibility of this project or this developer.
And it wouldn't be the responsibility of who, assuming let's just for the sake of a hypothetical, the developer sells to an owner, another person, another entity, that entity is also not responsible for subsidizing at the the shuttle for some period of for at some amount.
So only for that initial payment, if the shuttle is operational, then the time of that condition, but otherwise, no.
Okay, I appreciate that answer. Thank you.
Lisa.
And then just before we lose Val, although this may be a question for someone else on staff as well. It sounds like we have no, even if we wanted to, which we may or may not want to, but theoretically, there's no ability for the city or planning board to put in place specifics around prairie dog control or preferred methodology. Is that, did I understand that correctly? We could only make a recommendation as to how we hope it might go.
Yeah, I mean, so there's there's been set in place through the Wildlife Protection Ordinance, systematic way of of steps to take in terms of removal. So so I'm not aware of any intervention in that process for the planning board other than a recommendation.
Great, thank you, Val.
Good clarifications.
I I want to add on to that a little bit. There is a site review criterion that speaks about impacts to wildlife, including prairie dogs. So there is authority for you to consider that. It has been the practice in the past to apply the Wildlife Protection Ordinance standards to that project. And it's what the intent was when it was adopted. And and then also to keep in mind that the site actually does have an approval already. It could be developed under the existing approval and it would at that point also just be subject to the Wildlife Protection Ordinance.
All right. Excellent clarifications. Kurt, you have your hand up. Is that just a?
Yes. Thank you, David. I wanted to add on to John's question, although he didn't ask it directly. He was, I I did hear that he mentioned rent and and quantifying that. I I don't have a number of what that would look like between a similar market rent and affordable rents. But we do that, we do know that that's a significant amount each year for those number of units. However, it's worth noting in line with the with the previous discussions that you know, affordable housing isn't part of your criteria. They were there required to develop the property according to the inclusionary housing ordinance. They do have the ability to have a different approach to the affordable housing. And that is designated at the time that they pick up their permits. We don't expect a different approach because they've been very intentional with the approach that they've taken. And I believe this is mentioned in your packets as well, but just for transparency, just wanted to to mention that as well, that they they would have the ability to make a a different approach prior to pulling bullet building permits.
Great. Thank you, Sarah.
Sorry, I just wanted to follow up on what Edward said, but I think the person I need to ask is Hella, which is that 18 month period. Is that a legal, is there a legal explanation for that? Or like, how did that 18 month number come around?
Yeah, originally, the applicant had proposed or committed to providing $200 in funds to establish the shuttle. And we, staff and and I were talking about how do we enforce that? You know, and and what's the parameter? For how long is this commitment going to exist? And there shouldn't be a commitment to mid 200,000 and ultimately a shuttle is not established. And must to put the requirement on the applicant that a shuttle actually be established. And that's not, they were offering that there's a need for partners in that endeavor. So we discussed that with the applicant team and they proposed that timeframe. It doesn't have to be that timeframe, but I I would recommend that there is a timeframe so it's clear what the requirement is.
Okay, all right. I really appreciate that. Thank you very much.
And and I'll just add, Hella, it's somewhat similar to when we see two or three years of EcoPass agreed to that you have a timeframe on it just so that there's a timeframe under which the city can kind of enforce. And then hopefully that program continues in perpetuity beyond that similar kind of thing.
Do those programs continue in perpetuity?
That's a good question. I wonder if anybody has data on on on. Now that we've been doing this for a few years, I feel like since I've been on planning board, we've seen these kinds of EcoPass arrangements. Be interesting if if maybe that's an action that we could look at how many of those are are actually extended beyond the three years that are agreed to. Great.
That was, thank you, thank you.
Excellent. Well, with that, let's go ahead and pass it over to Gene to call on members of the public. Again, we're going to be speaking, the speaking segments will be two minutes and looking forward to hearing what everybody has to say.
Very good. Thanks, David. So this is a little different than usual. We had a pre-sign up. We've got about 50 folks on the pre-sign up. We're going to go through that list first. And then I've noted folks that also have sent asked to be added to the list in the chat. And some folks have their hands up, so we'll go to the raise hands once we get through the whole list. So please bear with me, going to work on this. We've got 97 folks as attendees. So I'll need to make sure that I can find you and unmute you on your turn. So again, thanks. Thanks for bearing with us on this tonight. All right, we're going to start at the top. I've got Kristin Eller, followed by Mike Choropoulos and Ryan Tanner. Ryan, I did not, I did not see Ryan's name in the list. So if Ryan Tanner is here under a different name, please let me know that. And after that is Julie Die. We're going to move around the list a little bit to move Brenna Die up as she's a young community member and doesn't, we want to just make sure that we're not keeping her from bedtime. So those are my first lists and I'll keep letting you guys know who's up next. So Kristin Eller, you may go ahead.
Hello, can you all hear me?
Can.
Fantastic. Thank you so much for letting me speak. My name's Kristin Eller and I'm a community member who lives in Gunbarrow. And I just first off, wanted to say that I am so excited by this. Looking through the plan and everything, just the first thing that comes to mind is community and what's being built here. But I also want to talk about how important housing is in Boulder. I am a graduate worker and I'm also a union member in United Campus Workers Colorado. And I've seen how difficult it is to live in Boulder. And I've also am very fortunate that hopefully, I believe, after I finish my education, I will be able to stay and live here. We'll see. I think we all know living in Boulder is very difficult and very hard. And I also want to be able to live in a place where a lot of people can live. If you work here, if you contribute to the community, if you are what makes up a neighborhood and what makes Boulder, Boulder. I want people to be able to live here. And that also means creating affordable housing and meaning that if you have a different income, you can still live here. And so the affordable housing that's in this project really excites me. And I want Boulder, who has promised to make affordable housing, live up to this promise. And I think that's truly the question that's here today. It's do we continue to operate in these unjust and inequitable systems that keep Boulder on the trajectory? Or do we act today to move us closer to equality in housing? And that's the decision that's here. And that's the decision that's here with this development. This development includes a lot of affordable housing. And there's not a lot of affordable housing right now in this community currently. So that's the choice right here. And I urge you to support this. I urge you to listen to all the Boulder residents that want Boulder to live up to the standards that we like to say, but we don't always act on. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristin. Okay, next up is Mike Choropoulos. Mike, you should be able to unmute.
Can you hear me?
We can. You can go ahead.
Great. Mike Choropoulos, attorney for Gun Barrel Community Alliance. Thank you for grappling with Boulder's planning future. GCA asked the board to respect our planning charter and the 2020 Boulder Valley Comp Plan Update Priorities, committing to Gun Barrel sub-community planning and heightened scrutiny industrial zoning.
I did well.
The site review should not be approved unless, on balance, it is consistent with BVCP policies. Gun Barrel residents envision a future that is more welcoming, diverse, vibrant, resilient, walkable and livable. Jobs, housing balance, swallowing all core values would repeat past planning mistakes. Many changes from last year's application range from minor to counterproductive. The mobility hub will increase miles traveled and traffic congestion. Postage stamp common areas are far less than what Boulder County required across Spined Road. It appears the city dropped the ball on PUD public amenities, including five acres of playing fields. Mixed use in townhomes, 3% of total area in units. Window dressing, net zero, missing. Is this the wrong project for the wrong site at the wrong time? Location. Holiday, Shining Mountain and Silver Saddle are model developments that broadly advance BVCP policies. Development uninformed by the pending sub-community plan will inhibit planning a better gun barrel. 15-minute mixed-use neighborhoods foster diversity. Isolated food deserts in urban heat islands, 2.37, do not. Unbalanced, this location might be a C minus or D plus. Real community engagement pays off with As and Bs in community support. This vote goes to whether the city applies the comp plan vision, core values and update priorities to Gun Barrel. Lastly, we welcome questions and dialogue, including where does development make sense in the near term? This land isn't going anywhere. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, I am not seeing Ryan Tanner in the list at the moment. Ryan, if you are here, you can please message me in the chat and and we'll tee you up after the next few folks. So next up is Julie Die, followed by Brenna Die. And we also have David Die signed up if April Lyons, who will be next, doesn't mind. We can do the two minutes each for the Die family and then move on to April Lyons. Okay. Julie, you should be able to unmute.
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yeah, okay, I'm gonna do two minutes each for for each of you.
Perfect.
Great.
My name is Julie Die. I live in Gun Barrel and the city of Boulder. My children will never live anything close to the fifteen minute neighborhood. Gun Barrel is the fifteen minute drive. They will never walk to the grocery store to get ice cream because it's a thirty four minute walk. They can't bike to the closest public playground because that's two point seven miles across the diagonal. On Bike to School Day, we drove and parked around the corner from Neighborhood School Crestview instead of walking one and a half hours. The planning board has read the original Celestial Seasonings PUD. What I find ironic is that my daughter wanted to design and build a clubhouse in our backyard, but Orchard Creek next to Celestial has an open space requirement in the PUD that prevents us from building even a clubhouse without a full and expensive architectural review. So while my family is held to the conditions of the PUD from thirty years ago, the current and potential owners of this specific land have ignored their requirements. Gun Barrel is the poster child for what happens when developments are permitted without a comprehensive sub-community plan. We lost our designated Gun Barrel downtown space and pedestrian area to yet another development. I am here trying to help Gun Barrel have a voice and be the best part of Boulder it can be. But I'm also heartbroken to note that I cannot recommend living here to other families. Boulder allows Andy Allison and Coburn to segregate our future neighbors with modest income. That carries a stigma and I find it classist and racist. Integrating affordable housing and market units should be a condition of this proposal and a best practice in the future. At the Good Neighbor Meeting, we we asked in writing three separate times about segregated affordable housing. And Andy Allison answered, quote, "It's working great," end quote, "it's going real well." We embrace integrated affordable housing and encourage higher affordable housing requirements when building on controversial habitats like this. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Okay, next up would be Brenna. Brenna, you can go ahead.
I'm Brenna Die. I'm eleven and I live in Gun Barrel and the city of Boulder. There are a lot of cars on spine, so we are only allowed to bike to Twin Lakes with an adult. There are not a lot of places to go around here for kids. We don't have a playground near our house or restaurants, a rec center or fun activities, so we drive everywhere. In their documents, the developers said that you can bike to the grocery store in three minutes. I'm not sure how fast the developers can bike, but I wonder if they've even been to Gun Barrel. You can't bike that fast. The fields at Celestial Seasonings have been a great neighbor. We walk our dog there, we wash the prey dogs in their holes, we can hear the red-tailed hawks. We stand in the fields every night at eight PM to howl for the first responders. We are often visited by a couple of great horned owls at our neighbor's tree. Every once in a while, we see a bald eagle and two weeks ago, a bobcat visited the habitat. It's nature. You shouldn't destroy nature. It's part of our ecosystem that keeps us alive. For the developers, this is just another development. It might only be ten acres to you, but to me, it's where I grew up. It's my childhood. Thank you.
Thanks, Brenna. Okay, and since we, since you guys are unmuted, if David, you want to go now, that would be great.
Sure. All right, I'm David Die. I also live in Gun Barrel in the city of Boulder. In light of Medtronic and Crispin Porter and Bogusky leaving Gun Barrel and taking thousands of jobs with them, this is our opportunity to plan our community. The developers have the right to ask, but they don't have the right of approval. That's left to to you, the planning board, on this industrial zone land that does not meet land use code and is inconsistent with the BVCP delegating high density to the community center. What I'm hearing tonight is a lot of contingencies. The developer is clearly ready to build, but there are still too many ifs on the table. Without financial commitment for things like the library annex or a long-term transit solution, we're on a path to load more residents into high-density units without the resources or amenities or infrastructure to handle the volume. We need a more comprehensive plan. Adding a cafe, calling it mixed use, when eight thousand square feet of commercial, when eight thousand square feet of commercial and community space represents three percent of the total bill is exaggerated at best and misleading at worst. Does Boulder have requirements on what a developer can call mixed use? According to Bill at Coburn, quote, "For the city's definition, really anything that provides a commercial use would make it a mixed use project. It's just up to your general view if you want to consider any project mixed use." This is pretty clear, the mixed use from our point of view. End quote. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Okay, our next few speakers are April Lyons, Lauren Growth, Kit Fuller and Katie Farnin. April, you can go ahead.
Hi, I live in Powderhorn at five nine zero six Gun Barrel. Even though I qualify for affordable housing, I was able to buy this place and start building equity in Boulder, of all places. The other day, I locked my keys in my twenty year old car. I felt stranded. My Uber took thirty minutes to get to me and added more miles to the road. That's because, as Science Daily concludes, for every hundred miles carrying passengers, Uber and Lyft drivers travel at an additional sixty nine miles without a passenger. It costed me forty dollars round trip to get to downtown Boulder. By the time I got home, I forgot groceries and had to pretty much go hungry. From the north side of the site where I live, it would be, it would take me an hour and ten minutes to walk back and forth from King Supers. I don't own a bike and would never ride up spine without a bike lane. We can't bank on the mobility hub as a substitute for transient or to meet BCP, BVCP's transient goals. Unknowns include, when will it run? Is there long-term funding? We can't bank on the developers to follow through and not pay cash and lube. They haven't been trustworthy in the past. Number one, in their latest, in their last development, they found a loophole and got around the Fair Housing Act by segregating amenities, even though there's tons of research on how this is detrimental to low-income children. Number two, they never mentioned the celestial annexation PUD that would actually make this area livable by adding a buffer against the factory and adding open space. Number three, they paid the city planners to push this proposal through instead of listening to residents. We're not helping low-income individuals by paying paving over intact ancient ecosystems. Please reject this proposal outright. Thank you.
Thank you, April. Okay, next up on the list is Lauren Growth. I am not seeing Lauren here. So Lauren, if you have, or if you're displaying a different name, please let me know in the chat. I'm also not seeing Kit Fuller. Yes, next up would be Katie Farnin. Katie, you can go ahead.
Thank you. Hello, Boulder Planning Board. My name is Katie Farnin. And as a resident of Gun Barrel, I support the Spine Road development. Six units. That's how many affordable units Gun Barrel has out of a population of over ten thousand. Six. I'm hearing opponents tonight talking about legal segregation and I find it very hard to take it face value. I'm sitting here in zip code eight oh three oh one, which, like the rest of Boulder, is nearly ninety percent white by design. We got here through legal maneuvers over the course of generations that continue today. So it's odd to use language of social justice to prevent housing without acknowledging that nearly every facet of our society is steeped in laws, policies, board decisions that disproportionately impact non affluent, non-white people. Because today's task is what do you do today within these very skewed systems of power to close the housing gap? I am absolutely sure that my neighbors who raised legitimate issues around unfair financing and building rules will fight to end and amend those rules long term, and I will join them. But their call to action, which is to halt the current proposal until some perfect future bureaucratic state, that I strongly oppose. Six units. Ten thousand people. The folks you won't hear from maybe at all are my future neighbors and the people who want to live here. Stable attainable housing is directly connected to public safety, public health, educational, environmental and social justice outcomes for everyone, including those who oppose these these projects. Most of the things I just cited reflect the values of the majority of this community. But the actual proof of our values lies in what we do. I support more resilient and balanced housing options in Gun Barrel, which is where I live. I support Spine Road. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Elaine, I see your hand up. Did you want to address something now or is that just a?
My apologies, I was clicking at it. It's an erroneous.
That just seems to be happening tonight.
Yeah.
Okay, I see that Kit, okay, Kit, you are under Julie Die, so I'm gonna let you unmute. You should be able to unmute now for Kit Fuller.
Okay, thanks a lot.
There you go.
Although I'm not sure why I'm under Julie Die. Hello, my name's Kit Fuller. I am president of Gun Barrel Community Alliance. We are a five oh one C three nonprofit that my wife and I co-founded in twenty twenty with neighbors to help Gun Barrel better work with the city of Boulder and Boulder County on planning and development. GCA is a, has a seven-member board that meets every other week. We have a website for sharing news and information and documents with our more than three hundred members. That's gunbarrelcommunityalliance.org. Gun Barrel is a unique place, miles from Boulder proper, surrounded by open space and farms. It's half-city, half-county. It's more affordable and diverse than the rest of Boulder. And its mix of residential and commercial and industrial development without city amenities is is also pretty unusual. There's very little mixed use in Gun Barrel. It's not a fifteen-minute neighborhood out here, which is the way people talk about us. Everybody needs a car to go anywhere. Bikes are fine for some, but it's impractical if you're a family trying to go someplace. Gun Barrel needs a sub-community plan to become a more vibrant and resilient, diverse place. Tonight's discussion centers on housing, a high priority for Boulder, but the devil is in the details as usual. In fact, there's a PUD involved in this discussion with unfulfilled requirements. There's affordable housing, but the plan is just for the minimum required. There are climate impacts, wildlife impacts, congestion and relatively quite, in a relatively quite rural spot. I would ask you to support for, I I support affordable housing, but when I look at all the details of this plan, I have to request that the planning board uphold the spirit of the BVCP and deny or table the application until after Gun Barrel sub-community planning. Thank you.
Thanks, Kit. Okay, again, I'm just gonna ask if Lauren Growth is here to let me know if you're on, if you're showing up under a different name and we'll get to you next. Our next few speakers will be Lauren Stargell, Rachel Daly, Gina McAfee and A.J. Pape. So Lauren, you should be able to unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, thanks for having me. I'm Dr. Lauren Stargell and I live in Boulder. I'm here in support of this development project. One-third of individuals who were literally homeless in Boulder County in twenty twenty were part of a family with children. If you are unfamiliar with the term literal homelessness, I'll give you the definition. You are literally homeless if your primary nighttime residence is in a public or private place not meant for human habitation. Or you are living in a temporary living arrangement such as a shelter, transitional housing or a hotel or motel. So I'll repeat my initial statement. One-third of individuals who are living in a shelter or in a place not meant for human habitation in Boulder County in twenty twenty were doing so with a family with children under the age of eighteen. I should note that these numbers are from the beginning of twenty twenty, before the pandemic, a time that has exacerbated these challenges. So when all of you wake up in the morning and get your child out of bed, when you ask them whether they want waffles or eggs for breakfast, when you get ready to drop them off at camp or to play with friends, take a minute to recognize that these mundane, day-to-day occurrences are a privilege. Family homelessness is a hugely complex issue with detrimental impacts for children seen even beyond any one episode of homelessness. Impact to their physical and mental health, to their academics, to their chances of graduating high school, to their social support networks and even to the intergenerational impacts for their own future children. Access to affordable housing is the biggest barrier for these families. I am here tonight as a resident, as a mother, as a neighbor and as a child development expert on the impacts of homelessness for children and families. Every child in Boulder deserves permanent and affordable housing. This project is one of many steps that we need to take as a community to support children and families. Because when all children thrive, our own children thrive. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. Okay, next up will be Rachel Daly and Gina McAfee's on deck. Rachel, you should be able to go ahead.
Hi, thanks for listening. My name is Rachel Daly and I am very familiar with the housing issues in Boulder. I work in real estate and the housing shortages is so challenging for so many people, especially people who can't afford the mortgages that were were requiring of them in town. And while I know this project alone won't close the gap of housing needs in this community, it is a step forward. One important aspect I'd like to raise is that we require service workers and other segments of our essential workforce to drive into the city to cater to the needs of the community. The more we are contributing, the more we're doing that, the more we're contributing to the rising pollution levels and greenhouse gas emissions. And beyond that, people deserve to be able to live where they work and become part of the community they serve. BVSD has some of the highest salaries for teachers in the state. And yet, I I know many, including my sister, who work in Boulder, at Boulder schools, and there's no way that she would ever be able to afford to live in Boulder. Luckily, she's able to afford to live in nearby Broomfield. But many of our essential workers are coming from out of town. So I I would ask you to please approve of this project. And let's get moving on some of this other stuff, too, to make Gun Barrel a great place to live.
Great, thanks, Rachel. Okay, next up is Gina McAfee. Gina, you should be able to go ahead.
Got it. Hi, this is Gina McAfee. I was born in Boulder sixty six years ago. And I've lived here either in the city or the county for the last thirty, full-time for the last thirty-five years. I support the Spine Road development because stable and attainable housing is crucial for individuals, families and communities to thrive. Our population is aging. Our school enrollment has been in decline for three straight years. As our population ages, healthcare, elder care, recreation, nursing, hospitality and other workforces become essential services for our community. As more and more young people and families can't envision being able to establish homes here, that will weaken the resilience and health of the entire community. This, by the way, includes my two adult children who would love to live in Boulder but simply cannot afford it, even though they both have full-time jobs. It is it is embarrassing to me to live in a place that is nearly ninety percent white by design, a process that was legally undertaken over the course of many generations. The question is, knowing that we continue to operate in unjust and inequitable systems, what concrete steps can we take today to move us closer to equity in housing? I urge you to approve the plan and to help Gun Barrel strengthen and diversify its housing. I urge you to approve the plan and to help Gun Barrel strengthen and diversify its housing options. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenna. Okay, um, next up I see A.J. Pape on the list, but I am not seeing AJ in the room. And so if AJ is here, please let me know in the chat. Also, Robert O'Day, I am not seeing. Similar, Robert, if Robert O'Day is here, let me know. After that is Angie Mashaw. Angie, I see you, yay. Okay, and we do want to remind folks to please give your name and address for the record. Angie, you can go ahead.
Hi. My name's Angie Mashaw, 4626 Burgundy Lane. Um, I have lived in Boulder for 41 years of my 62 years on this planet. I support creating a much-needed Gun Barrel sub-community plan prior to approval of any further development in Gun Barrel. The proposed development has only a fraction of the public benefits that Celestial Seasonings was to provide under the PUD. And that the five HOAs east of the proposal now provide its residents. Celestial Seasonings is to have provided to soccer and ball fields, daycare center. And please keep in mind that the Celestial Seasonings community amenities, their cafe, their gift shop, their visitor's center, and tours are now permanently closed. They are not going to reopen them. If I, the five neighboring HOAs each provide abundant amenities and contiguous usable open space. In addition to the five HOAs own, they own and manage Gun Barrel Commons Park. The seven-acre park is private. It's located just steps away from the proposed development. Gun Barrel Commons Park costs around $110,000 a year to maintain. This private park doesn't exist for the applicant's residence to use. So the applicant can skirt the responsibilities, provide, to provide adequate usable contiguous open space and adequate recreational amenities on the site. Please reject this proposal in light of the many reasons presented by Gun Barrel Community Alliance. Or please table it until after sub-community plan for Gun Barrel is adopted. Thank you so much for this opportunity and I really appreciate your service.
Thank you, Angie. Okay, so we've been notified that Anna Segur will not be here. So next up, we've got Andrew Harris, followed by Stephen Swawski, Stephen Pagnata, and Dorothy Donahue. Andrew Harris. You may go ahead. Andrew, can you unmute? Okay, perhaps Andrew stepped away. We'll circle back.
Hi, sorry, can you hear me?
We can. You can go ahead. Yep.
Okay, great. Hi, my name is Andrew Paul. I'm a resident at the Willow Bridge apartment complex right up the street from the proposed development. In the years I've been living here, I've been a regular rider of the J205T, both of which pick up adjacent to the proposed development. So I'm very familiar with the infrastructure area. I'm also a regular bike commuter into the city of Boulder. And I, I strongly support the proposed development. But I think many of the opponents that you'll hear from tonight don't recognize is that the influx of the influx of residents and tax dollars provided by the development will support future infrastructure investments in the area. In addition to the goals that others have spoken about, including addressing Boulder's middle-income housing prices, and also supporting affordable housing in the city of Boulder. Sorry, excuse me. In addition, I think it sets an awful precedent to allow a group of wealthy homeowners to abuse the planning process to prevent housing from being built simply because it would inconvenience them. Fundamentally, I think that that would implement de facto segregation by income level in the city of Boulder. I think it sets an awful precedent. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Okay, next up is Stephen Swawski. Stephen, I'm gonna Okay. Give me just one second. I'm gonna try to get this working. Okay, there we go. You can go ahead.
All right, thanks. Hello, so I'm, I live here in Gun Barrel on 5908 Gun Barrel Avenue. Um, I'm also a, I support Gun Barrel Community Alliance. I donate a lot of money to them. Um, and the first thing I want to say is I take great offense to a lot of the previous speakers saying that we're all a bunch of rich white people here. We're actually a lot of low-middle-income people who live up here in Gun Barrel of all races, genders, nationalities. I won't, I won't pick out people in particular. My, my neighbors are great people. They're from, they're from another country and, and we are, we are the low-income place. I think Boulder greatly needs affordable housing. It's, it's, it's a huge problem. Like another previous speaker, I qualified for affordable housing, but I managed to buy my own place in Gun Barrel and made that work. I see a lot of flaws with this plan that's being proposed. I think it's, I think it's short-sighted. I think it's, they're pushing a lot of, a lot of the speakers and things they push. They're trying to play on the desperation for affordable housing and not thinking things out. Obviously, there's been a lot of things coming up. I'm gonna specifically poke on the traffic and the cycling. I'm actually a professional cyclist. I find this area quite dangerous and I think if they, if they put some of those parallel parked cars next to that buffered bike lane, it's gonna be even more dangerous. To get through the place, these roads, I actually ride in the middle of road, which is legal, but to protect myself because it's really not safe to ride here. I know Julie Dyson's children are not allowed to ride here for those reasons too. I think this is, this is the wrong development for the wrong place. It, I mean, it looks like a fabulous plan. I can see this in like somewhere in, be close to the middle of Denver, but not here in Gun Barrel. Um, I urge you to reject this plan and adopt a community plan before going forward with any more buildings here. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Okay, next up is Stephen Pagnata. Stephen, Steve, you should be able to go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for the time and the opportunity. I'm Steve Pagnata. I'm a resident of the city of Boulder. And I urge you to reject this proposal. We adopt the community plan. The reason being more so is, yes, indeed, we desperately need more affordable housing, more housing for the homeless. But this shouldn't be something that happens to the detriment of our environments, our open spaces, our wildlife. And just to feed this ongoing sprawl in Boulder, I, I ask that we use vision and we refer to the legacy of Boulder that recognized and valued our environmental spaces for what they are. Every open space, every space that supports wildlife and multiple ecosystems, everyone that we pay over is gone forever. Let's use vision. Let's see this as an opportunity. There's hundreds of thousands of vacant spaces now, post-COVID office spaces, warehouse spaces. And most of those aren't going to change. The paradigm shifted. Most people aren't going back to the office. Let's create these spaces for affordable housing for everybody, for our first responders and the homeless. And let's put those in places that already exist where you don't have to create more traffic, more infrastructure, and destroy more wildlife. It's already here. We need vision and cooperation. We don't have to invent the wheel. I refer you to Lodo, Soho, Tribeca. It'll respect our legacy and offer a much greater future without the sprawl. I think this affordable housing thing has been a Trojan horse for more sprawl. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Okay, next up is Dorothy Donahue. And that follows by Chris Goodman, Randall Clark. And it sounds like Alana Irving would like to switch with Robert Irving. So I'll work on that too, to help facilitate pickups. So Dorothy, you should be able to go ahead.
Okay. Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, um, hello to the planning board. I've lived in Gun Barrel for the past 25 years. And I am a member of the Gun Barrel Community Alliance. And we are not rich. Whoever said that one is, people out here are not rich. I request that this proposal be rejected for all the different reasons that have been presented by the GCA. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Dorothy. Okay, let's see. Next up Okay, I see, see Goodman, because Chris Goodman, Chris, you should be able to unmute.
Thank you so much. Can you hear me? Okay?
We can.
Okay, terrific. I would like to, I would like to ask the planning board to please take a look at Zillow Rentals and see actually what is available to rent in the city of Boulder. A lot of these housing developments that Covert Homes and other developers have just put up in the center and the hubs inside of Boulder are not being rented at the prices that they need. I was just looking over on Zillow Rentals and there are 26 available in that Pearl Street and 30th Street area. In Gun Barrel alone, there are 65-plus condos, apartments, and townhomes currently available to rent in Gun Barrel. And those prices start at around $1,200 to $1,400. You'll find that at diagonal crossing, the studio apartment starts at around 1,900 and on top of that, you need to add trash removal, which they will, parking, landscaping fee, electric bills. And if you want to park your car there, there's a fee for that too. Literally behind our home is our neighbor. Well, our neighborhood is right here, right behind where this development is proposed to go in. We are in the city. We pay city taxes. We have zero amenities, no public parks accessible, no pools, no connecting bike path. Minimal bus services are available. None of my children could take the bus to, to and from school. They had to, they on occasion could take it to school, but it did not align with the school starting area. I think the credibility of what's been stated prior by the developer needs to be questioned and investigated as far as just doing your due diligence. If you Google 4,600 Sleepy Time Drive, it is 1.3 miles to King Supers. It is not a fast-get-there kind of situation. I request that this proposal please be rejected in light of the many substantive reasons presented by GCA and at best tabled until after Gun Barrel Subcommittee Planning is completed. RTD stating that the hopes to increase bus service is just a hope. Look at the light rail. It's, it's not even here and we've already paid for it. So I just ask that you please consider that, please.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Randall Clark. Randall, you should be able to unmute. Randall, are you here? Okay, well, we can circle back to Randall. Okay, the next, next up, I've had a request to just swap Alana Irving with Robert Irving, which are close in the list. I think I'm seeing both as showing up as Alana Irving, so Robert, I think I've just let you unmute. Is that? Okay. The other Okay, let me go back. Here we go. Okay, Robert, you should be able to go ahead.
Great, can you hear me?
We can.
That worked. Well, good evening. I'm a resident of Boulder and live in Gun Barrel. I have two items. First, a sub-community plan. North Boulder has one and East Boulder is getting one. Gun Barrel needs one. The other presenters will go into detail on this item. Second, affordable housing. I support affordable housing. Everyone I know in Gun Barrel supports affordable housing. The city has a goal, 15% of all housing units be affordable by the year 2035. As of December 2020, only 8.4% of the housing units in the city are affordable. Although the developers offer to make 25.7% of the proposed 230 units permanently affordable is generous, the city will not reach the 15% goal by 2035 this way. The following assumptions that I'm going to present use data from the city of Boulder's affordable housing dashboard and the developer's proposal. We start with the current city rate of 8.4%. We assume that the city allows two such developments per year from now until 2035. By doing so, the percent of affordable units grows only to 8.7%, excuse me, 10.7%. These assumptions are in line with the data on the city's website and the developer's proposal. In fact, the city would need to allow two such developments each year from now until 2080 to reach its goal of 15%. What percent is really needed to reach the goal? That percentage is 58%. These calculations were made using data from the city, the developer, simple math, and a spreadsheet. In closing, I ask that the planning board reject or table this proposal until after a Gun Barrel sub-community plan is completed. Thank you for your time and allowing me to speak this evening.
Thank you, Robert. Okay, next up we have Stephen Foster, followed by Nora Swan Foster, and then back to Alana Irving. And after that, Rose Goodman. So, okay. Stephen Buster, you should be able to unmute.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I appreciate all the work you do. I've lived in the neighborhood of the Spine Development for 30 years now. And I believe this development is in a bad location. It is a very bad plan for the community, not just the community that lives here now, but for those who might move there in, here in the future. And I urge you to vote against it. While your staff made a good presentation, please do not be deceived. This is a bad site for the project. It is not a walking neighborhood. Transportation is not guaranteed and funding can easily go away. The location is a food desert. The nearest grocery is not close, especially for older members of the community. There are no family restaurants, just breweries. There is inadequate parking. This will lead to on-road parking on the one road that leads in and out of the development. And that road is terribly unsafe now with heavy trucks coming in and out even before construction starts. The amenities are exaggerated or misrepresented. These are overly optimistic pie-in-the-sky statements simply to get approval. Library is unfunded and like other places in Boulder, I don't believe it will happen. Medtronic is leaving. Celestial Seasonings are closing their amenities permanently. And the proposed open space is inadequate, does not satisfy the Celestial Seasonings commitment to Gun Barrel. Please note, I'm not against affordable housing and you've heard that many times this evening. We're not. However, what we need at this location is the implementation of a sub-community plan for Gun Barrel before this land grab is approved. So we can integrate and expand into the city of Boulder's long-term vision for the sustainable and innovative development of Gun Barrel. Gun Barrel could be an example, example of innovation. I don't believe this plan will do that. I urge you not to, I urge you to listen to the community that has lived here, here for a long time and recognize that this is a bad location for the project. And just one note, the Good Neighbor Meeting that was held by the proposed development. And just one note, the Good Neighbor Meeting that was held by the proposed developer was one where the community was not allowed to speak. The applicant pre-selected the questions they answered and did not answer the neighbors' concerns.
Wrap up, please.
Okay, thank you for giving me the time. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Okay, next up is Nora Swan Foster. Nora, you should be able to.
Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Nora Swan Foster, 4467 Pembroke Garden, and my home backs up to Spine Road. In the 30 years we've lived here, we've raised two children who attended Boulder High and CU Boulder. As a Gun Barrel resident, I live in the county. I have no vote in the city, and I'm powerless to decisions made by the city. So I really want to beg the Boulder Planning Board to support a much-needed sub-community plan. We want better community, not a better income for private developers. Gun Barrel has always been more affordable than Boulder. In 1990, we were told Gun Barrel would soon have amenities that would make it a walking community, that Spine Road would never become a thoroughfare for traffic, promises for the future. Instead, we've watched the community plans be nixed, and the traffic on Spine Road increased to dangerous levels that includes trucks. How is this going to be different? I want to know what does it mean to make Spine a true street, one of the many curated phrases that need questioning. This proposal is absolutely the wrong project for this site. This proposal is nicely curated but has unresolved issues, promises for the future. I asked the planning board to do a deep dive into the proposal and fact-check the data regarding the promises, including local job opportunities. For example, look at the size of the pool compared to the space taken for structures. I absolutely do support affordable housing, and I reject assumptions like others have said tonight that made that our community is only white, rich people who don't support affordable housing. Gun Barrel has always been an affordable mixed neighborhood compared to Boulder. This proposal will not truly offer affordable housing. It's just more apartments at high prices. I've supported the city of Boulder for 30 years while living in the county, and I'd like my voice to be heard to support innovation and vision. So I'm asking you to vote against this proposal and request a thoughtfully researched and collaborative sub-community plan that is not rushed and includes the substantial concerns from this Gun Barrel Community Alliance. Thank you so much for your service and for listening to us tonight.
Thank you, Nora. Okay, next up is Alana Irving. Alana, you should be able to unmute.
Thank you so much. My name is Alana Irving. I live in the city of Boulder in Gun Barrel. I pay city taxes and vote in city elections. I also support GCA. I further support affordable housing ownership and support innovative solutions to reach Boulder's goal of 15% affordable housing by the year 2035. I want to be neighbors with my kids' teachers and my friends who work at King Supers and the essential workers that I encounter, but they don't want to rent. They want to own, so they choose to drive to Longmont, from Longmont and Erie and Broomfield and Westminster because they don't want their money going towards rent when they can have their money going towards ownership of condos, townhomes, or homes. We need affordable home ownership solutions for all in Boulder. The city of Boulder's recent newsletter was about housing equity and Boulder's new collaboration with the Housing Solution Lab. It also touted climate-friendly solutions to industry carbon footprint, net-zero development, net vision zero, zero emissions transportation. There was also an article about the East Boulder Sub-Community Plan, which thanked the community for its participation. This is what Gun Barrel wants. We want a sub-community plan in place before any new development, a plan that will align Gun Barrel with Boulder's vision for the future. Gun Barrel is rural, and we are 100% car-dependent here. There's already heavy congestion on Spine and Jay. The proposed high-density apartment complex is not consistent with net-zero development, zero emissions, and especially not vision zero. We respectfully request that this proposal be rejected until a Gun Barrel Sub-Community Plan can be thoughtfully enacted. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Alana.
Uh, Jean. Could we have two more speakers and then take a short break since we're almost nine o'clock? Thank you.
Thank you, David. Okay, then we'll see. Well, Rose Goodman and Christian Vale are next. So, Rose, you can go ahead.
Here you go, Rose. Okay, hello, my name is Rose Goodman, and I'm north Orchard Creek, and I live in north Orchard Creek. I've been here for 21 years and have not been able to find a job. The bike path also has to cross over to, I know they say it's harshly fair, but the reality is you have to ride on Jay, and there have been dust, and it's been horrible, and it's terrifying to ride on Jay. The bus does not come as frequently as they say. It is hard to commute to work, and there isn't work around there. I've lived here for 21 years. I've not ever been able to find a job near where I live. And please reject this proposal. I know that the developers keep saying the same things over and over again, and there are so many issues with it. The community that lives here now, you just don't want it to happen. And please listen to us as people that live here currently in this community. Think about the people that truly live here here now and that the council represents here currently. So please, please reject this proposal. The transportation and everything else just does not get here, and why don't we develop somewhere that actually has open buildings right now? I know that there are current open buildings that are just sitting there open. Why are we developing open spaces? And we could actually do something with the current open buildings that have already been developed. So please, please reject this proposal. Yeah, just please reject this proposal, and please double-check your facts. Thank you.
Thank you, Rose. I'm not seeing Christian Vale on the list, so we can move to Jan Dorsey. Jan, you can go ahead. And this should be the last speaker before the break.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Thank you. My name is Jan Dorsey. I live in Powderhorn condominiums, and I've lived in Boulder County for 50 years, eight of these in Gun Barrel, and I support the Gun Barrel Community Alliance. A few of my concerns about this development are the traffic on Jay Road trying to get onto the diagonal is backed up to 55th Street during morning and 3 o'clock rush hour. Often, we will sit there for several light changes. With hundreds more people driving, the traffic will be backed up clear to Spine Road intersection. There are not enough parking spaces allotted. Most couples will have two cars, and there is no room for visitor parking. I live on Spine Speedway facing this property. With the proposed parking on both sides of Spine, bicycles, many heavy trucks, 18-wheeler traffic, and hundreds more cars, Spine will become a transportation nightmare. There are only two benefits to the neighborhood with this project, a cafe and a library annex. The Boulder library is short of funds, with 55 people being laid off last year, and only two of the five branches have reopened since COVID, including the North Boulder Annex, which is still closed. Even if the library district funding is voted, will there be enough money to staff a new branch? We would appreciate a holiday-type neighborhood here. Thank you, members of the planning board, for making Boulder and hopefully Gun Barrel better places to live. Thank you.
Thank you, Jan. Okay.
Thank you, Jean. So, yes, let's go ahead and just stretch our legs for about three minutes, and we'll reconvene, let's say, at four minutes after nine.
Okay, David, are we back?
I just myself. Let's see, I see Sarah and John are back. Let's see. There's Lisa. See.
Here's back.
My screen has shuffled people around, so I think we're all good to go now. So, Jean, let's go ahead and continue with the public hearing.
Okay, great. Looks like we have Neil Gano up next, followed by Terrence Millis, Betsy Gomes, Eric Budd, and Rona Unsell. And again, I apologize as usual for mispronouncing names. All right, Neil, you should be able to unmute.
Good evening. Can you guys hear me?
We can.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak. Good evening, everyone. Yeah, first off, I'd just like to say I oppose the project. I think there's a lot of wonderful things that people have already said and put forth already, so I'll spare you the time on that, but I think there is one thing that we could all agree on, that the traffic levels that are in the area already are exacerbating the current means and roadways that are already there. I think they're already overwhelmed. I live in the Orchard Creek neighborhood. Number of different neighbors, including myself, that all have little kids. And with the high traffic in morning rush hour, afternoon rush hour, it's already a dangerous environment for anybody that's out riding along the roadway. I would oppose the project just on the simple fact that I think we need to mitigate some of the traffic in the area already, and I think adding this proposal and this development is just going to make things worse. Really, the only way I could support this is if we're finding a way to bridge an area between the development and Highway 119 to allow traffic to escape a little bit more smoothly or give additional outlets for traffic to get out of the area. In the time we've lived here, I've seen a number of accidents on Spine already. People stuck on the median. One car that spun out and flipped into the pine trees that back up to our fence line. Had the trees not been there, that car would have been in our kitchen. So I think the traffic speaks for itself. There's enough congestion in the area already, where I feel like we kind of need to take a step back and rethink this proposal and try to do something different with that space. Thanks very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Neil. I will just circle back. I'm still not seeing Ryan Tanner, Lauren Growth, AJ Pape, Robert O'Day, or Christian Vale of the folks that were not here earlier. If you are here, let me know, and I can get you into the into the queue. So, next up, we have Terrence Millis. Terrence, you can go ahead.
Great, thank you. So thank you for the opportunity to comment. My name is Terrence Millis, and I've been a resident of Orchard Creek since 2012. I've read the Item 5A meeting packet and commented previously in last year's planning board meeting on this proposal. I see that the developer has revised the architectural design, added a library, cafe, and other amenities to benefit the existing community. I also see that they've reduced the planned dwelling units from 268 to 230 units. I'm encouraged that the proposal has added these changes. However, glaring deficiencies remain. The proposed density remains too high at 230 units or 23 units per acre, when the surrounding communities are less than 21 and some as low as six units per acre, like my own community Orchard Creek. 230 units is too much. This brings us to the most glaring deficiency related to this proposal, a credible plan to mitigate traffic. I've seen the hope for the best plan, the one where residents of this development happily ride their electric bikes to work or use the so-called mobility hub. Where is the city's plan to address the dramatic increase in traffic? There is none. We heard from those city members this evening already. We all know that the 319 parking spaces that the developer has planned will result in hundreds of new cars driving south on Spine to Jay into Boulder every morning and reverse every night. Spine is already inundated with cars. It's near the top of the list right now for pending projects on Boulder's Neighborhood Speed Management Program, but it's been at the top of that list for years. Sarah, John, Lisa, and other board members, I've heard your questions this evening, and I can tell that you genuinely care about making the right decision. I ask that you please deny this project until the Gun Barrel Sub-Community Plan is completed and the Spine Speed Management Project is completed. We can do better than this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Terrence. Okay, next up is Betsy Gomes. Betsy, you can go ahead. Betsy, you should be seeing an ability to unmute. Okay, we can circle back to Betsy. All right. Next up is Eric Budd. Eric, you should be able to unmute.
Thank you. Hello, planning board. Thanks for holding this hearing. My name is Eric Budd. I live in Boulder. I absolutely support this housing development. For too long, I've just seen my friends, my neighbors, people that I care about, move out of Boulder. I've lived here for 10 years, and move out of Boulder. I've lived here for 10 years and almost my entire friend group turns over every five years. That's what it's like to be a young person in Boulder. And just hearing people who oppose this project tonight, it's it's really depressing to me. I hear, wow, Gun Barrel is incredibly unloved and it's terrible and you should never build anything here because it's terrible. And that is like one of the saddest things that that I can imagine hearing. When I moved to Boulder, I always wondered why, why is Gun Barrel so separate and disparate from Boulder? It's, it makes no sense. But, you know, part of it is our land use pattern. We've, we've built, bought up a lot of open space and preserved it, which is great, but that's also caused this disconnection that we have. And that part of the Affordable Housing Plan of Boulder is everyone moves further and further outside of Boulder, and that's when the Affordable Housing Plan. So at one point, Gun Barrel was affordable. It's, it's no longer affordable now. And this, this idea that this housing is somehow segregated. You know what I see in Boulder? The segregation and housing is between who can live in Boulder and who can't. And the Affordable Housing Plan for Boulder for decades has been moved to Longmont, Lafayette, whatnot. And the entire front range is getting so expensive. We need projects exactly like this, ones that are building a decent number of units and a large percentage of affordable and offer great amenities to the community. And we need to do that. Need to connect older and gun barrel and actually have a vision for making our community better. So I support this project. Thanks so much.
Thanks, Eric. Okay, I'm gonna circle back to see if Betsy is available to unmute. You should be able to unmute. Okay, well, we'll try again. Later on. Okay, our next speaker would be Rona. Rona Unsell.
Yeah, as Rona starts, I'll just remind people to, if you want to give just your neighborhood, that's fine. We prefer you give your address if you don't mind. Thank you.
Okay, am I unmuted?
You are, you can go ahead.
Okay, fine. I live at 4527 Wellington Road in Gun Barrel. I've lived here for 24 years, oh, excuse me, 21 years. And I support Gun Barrel Community Alliance. I'm also an advocate for affordable housing. This is not a debate about affordable housing. These developers are intentionally misrepresenting their project under the cover of affordable housing. But there's much more at stake here, and John has brought that up about land use. This should not be seen as an affordable housing debate. This is a particular piece of land. And the fact that Gun Barrel needs a sub-community plan because we have very limited vacant land. We have a lot of issues that we need addressed. We, there is a PUD on this Haynes Celestial property. In the 1980s, the original PUD required two playing fields for active recreation, a community garden, and a childcare center. This was required for Celestial to purchase this property and should not be removed for these developers. This land, the driven objective on the data, the applicant's undecided presentation of it is that their community space is 7,766 square feet emitting their leasing office. That's less than 18% of an acre on this 10-acre property. And there was supposed to be 200,000 square feet that Haynes Celestial was obligating to provide the planned urban development. But they ignored it. Instead of providing open space, Haynes Celestial is giving us an environmental heat zone of pavement and 650 new residents. This is a significant piece of land in Gun Barrel, and we ask you to please hit pause and consider our future. We're not a rich community, and we are affordable housing out here. We asked the city for a sub-community plan for Gun Barrel before allowing this precious piece of land to be destroyed. And I appreciate you listening to us. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Rona. Okay, next up will be Artis Retima. I'm so sorry. I'm sure I'm not getting that right. Followed by, we have Hannah George, Ryan Bonick, Carmen Barron, and Adlin Ferry. Okay, let's see, Artis, you, let's see, we'll start over here. Artis, you should be able to unmute.
Okay, can everybody hear me?
Yep.
Great. My name is Artis Retima, and I have lived in Boulders since 1976. And I have lived on Orchard Creek Lane since 1993. This is not a walkable neighborhood. We had to drive our kids to schools, to softball, baseball, soccer practices and games many, many miles on the road. It is too late for our children. They're all grown. But you can make a big difference for the children that are in the neighborhood now and the children that will continue to move here. The Shining Mountain and Holiday Developments are fantastic projects of planned communities. East Boulder Sub-Community Plan is a shining example of residents, business owners, and developers working together. Grant us the same opportunity by developing the Gun Barrel Sub-Community Plan promised us in 2004. Thank you so much for listening to me and for all the countless hours of service that you provide for Boulder.
Thank you, Artis. Okay, next up is Hannah George. Hannah, you can go ahead.
Hi, thank you. Yeah, this is Hannah George. I live at 4665 Ingram Court. And I also worked at an organic farm less than two miles from the proposed housing on Spine Road. And I absolutely support building these homes. I actually stopped by the site today on my way home from work and was so excited by the prospect of a beautiful neighborhood with a vibrant cafe, happy children in a play area, and beautiful gardens where neighbors of all incomes can gather. I appreciate that this new neighborhood includes both units for sale and for rent and with prices affordable to a range of incomes, which will increase both economic and racial diversity on the spot. I also appreciate the many different transportation modes that are included in the design, which will further reduce transportation emissions by getting folks out of their single occupancy vehicles in suburbia and onto nearby and future bike paths, local buses, car share, and the creative van pool. That vision is of a place I would love to live car-free. We can make that vision come true. To meet the goal of 15% affordable, permanently affordable housing in Boulder, we need to say yes to affordable, dense, mixed-use housing here and across the city. Workers like me and people of color like me need places to live in Boulder. Saying no to this forward-thinking development says no to racial diversity and economic opportunity, climate smart living, and labor-intensive organic vegetables grown by low-income workers like me. Building this housing is equitable for people and it's good for the planet. If you support affordable housing, please support affordable housing now. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Hannah. Okay, next up is Ryan Bonick. Ryan, you should be able to go ahead.
All right. Hi, my name is Ryan Bonick, and I live at 3120 Pearl Parkway. I'd like to thank the Planning Board for their time, and I'll try and keep it short. I strongly support this development. It provides a lot of much-needed housing, especially onsite affordable housing, which we need, and you don't get more affordable housing with blocking affordable housing. And while I'm probably one of the first people to like push for better and more more bike infrastructure, there, there really is solid existing infrastructure around here. We're getting to downtown Boulder and Gun Barrel. I've cycled through spine probably almost daily. And honestly, I'm not sure where all these people are seeing Speedway traffic, but that's whatever. Anyway, there's also bus traffic, although COVID has shut a lot of that down. I'm also super excited about the future expansions in the area. And finally, like, the library and cafe are both going to be just absolutely wonderful amenities to this new development and all the existing neighbors. I'm not, I'm not really surprised that the walkability score is as low as it is, but I'm glad this is gonna hopefully improve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Okay, next up is Carmen Barron. Carmen, you can go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
You can.
Awesome. Good evening, Planning Board members. Thanks for this chance to comment on this proposal. My name is Carmen Barron. My husband and I have lived in Gun Barrel for five years, and I've been an active Boulder voter since 1989. We support the Gun Barrel Community Alliance and all of its efforts to improve our area for both current and future residents. Among the proposals, many issues. Our increased volume of traffic is a major concern of ours. Speeding cars on Jay and Spine Road already make bike travel dangerous, and parking overflow will most certainly reach big-city competition levels. We urgently request that you deep-dive fact-check the quoted numbers regarding transit distances, timeframes, and travel costs from their quote "mobility hub." A litmus test could be, start their recommended e-scooter ride from the hub site to King Supers. Pick up a modest grocery list, and as you juggle your purchases while e-scooting back to that hub, reflect on how realistic that grocery run is for your everyday life in 100-degree weather or during a snowfall or in a hailstorm. I ask this tonight. Search your feelings. You know this to be true. This project is not appropriate for this Gun Barrel location. Approving it now without a completed Gun Barrel Sub-Community Planning Study would be a great disrespect to our neighborhoods and to the additional 600-plus residents being quote invited to live to live here. Our Gun Barrel community deserves the same careful, thoughtful, forward-thinking consideration as every other precious Boulder proper community like the Holiday Neighborhood, Shining Mountain Waldorf School, or the in-process Alpine Boulder Proposal. We urgently request that this proposal be denied or at least paused in order to get the necessary residents' input and engagement in a completed Gun Barrel Sub-Community Planning Session before any development project is started. Please choose wisely. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Carmen. Apologies for mispronouncing your last name.
No worries.
Thanks. Next up is Adlin. Adlin, you can go ahead.
Hello.
There we go.
My name is Adlin Ferry, though I am a fairy, and I live in Boulder where I work as an engineer, and I own a house at 19th and Iris. While I now own a house, I lived in Boulder for almost a decade on barely above minimum wage, and I rented for that entire time. And to put it lightly, it was hard. And I don't even have kids, and I don't have significant debt. None of my friends have been able to stay in Boulder due to the exorbitant prices, and it is from that perspective that I want to speak in support of the Spine Road Community Project. By providing 25% affordable housing on site, it will contribute to fixing the Boulder housing crisis. If we want to meet our 2035 goal of 15% permanently affordable units, we have to start now. This 15% goal is far from being achieved in Boulder, and that's especially true in Gun Barrel where there are currently, as it has been said, only six permanently affordable units in all of Gun Barrel. The Spine Road community will create mixed-income neighborhoods in Gun Barrel and bring greater economic parity for residents. It will do this without sacrificing beautiful architecture or green open space, which are obviously qualities that we all love to protect in our community. Yeah, so stable, attainable, and affordable housing is crucial for individuals, families, and communities to thrive. It is directly connected to public health, educational equity, economic justice, inclusivity, and social justice. These are qualities that people of Boulder say are pillars of our identity, and it's time for us to take action to prove those core values. Please approve the Spine Road Community Development. Thank you.
Thank you, Adlin.
Sorry for yelling.
Okay, all right, our next few speakers will be Kurt Nardback, Rebecca Davies, Brendan Douglas, Lisa Haney, and Bruce Hall. Kurt, you should be able to go ahead.
Hi, Kurt Nardback here. I live in North Boulder, but I work for Conic Manultas Systems Laboratory at 6075 Longview Drive, which is just a couple longish blocks from this site. I ride past it most days, both to and from work, so maybe 500 times per year. And I often see John Kirstal on my way to work. We have 12 people in our office. All but two of us live outside Boulder in Berthoud, Longmont, Erie, Broomfield, Westminster, Superior, and Nederland. Those people invariably drive to work because they have no good alternatives. Their commutes are stressful, and from the harrowing tales I've heard, sound dangerous, especially in inclement weather. By contrast, I have a mostly relaxing bike commute to work, and the other coworker who lives in Boulder bikes at least half the time. Most of my coworkers would like to live in Boulder, but the shortage of housing means it's financially impossible or impractical for them. For their sake, and the sake of tens of thousands of others in a similar situation, we desperately need more housing. We particularly need more housing in this area of Gun Barrel because of all the jobs here. I'm especially concerned about the people in middle-income jobs in this area. People who work in manufacturing and service at places like Nedtronics, Celestial Seasonings, and BI, for whom the commute to work, if they lived at this proposed development, would be a very short walk. Those are the people who, in general, have to live the farthest away in order to find a place they can afford, and yet for whom the cost of commuting poses the greatest burden. Please approve this project for those people. Thank you.
Thank you, Kurt. Okay, next up is Rebecca Davies. And Brendan Douglas is not here, so after Rebecca will be Lisa Haney. Rebecca, you should be able to go ahead. You're unmuted.
Um, thank you.
Rebecca, you're really faint. If you could speak up or get a little closer to the microphone, that would be great.
Is that better?
That's better.
Okay, great. Thank you. Hi, my name is Rebecca Davies, and I live at 33 South Boulder Circle. I've been listening to, you know, all of these comments, and I'm hearing a lot of people talking about the things that Gun Barrel lack. A lack of stores and other destinations, you know, lack of the sort of 15-minute neighborhood design, a lack of soccer fields, lack of safe walking and biking infrastructure in some areas, a desire for light rail and other public transit traffic concerns and unemployment concerns. And and I hear all these things, and I think, you know, these are a lot of valid concerns. But I think it's, it's a little bit too much to put on one housing development to solve all of these things for a community. If we ask our housing developments, especially our new affordable housing developments, to solve all of these other issues at once, we're never going to get more affordable housing developments because they just can't do that. And also because the cost of fulfilling all these regulations becomes so high that it's no longer affordable to develop those kinds of projects. So I think we need to keep in mind that there's a goal here, which is to produce desperately needed housing in this city, like truly desperately needed. And all of these other concerns are valid, but they aren't dependent on this development one way or another. Those things can be worked on separate from whether or not this housing is there. And I highly encourage you to support the development of this housing because at least it can solve some of those concerns, one of them being affordable housing, which everyone is saying they they do support. And also, you know, a few amenities to start getting Gun Barrel closer towards that picture of what a 15-minute neighborhood really looks like. So please, please support the development on Spine Road. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. Okay, next up is Lisa Haney. And it appears that Robert O'Day is is back in the meeting, so we'll, we'll move to Robert next, who was earlier in the list, but not here at that point. So Lisa, you should be able to go ahead.
Hi, my name is Lisa Haney, and I'm a resident of Gun Barrel. I live right on Spine Road in Powderhorn. And just this morning, I actually took that legendary walk down to King Supers to do some grocery shopping. And I got to walk back in 97-degree weather with 20 pounds of groceries. Takes, I would say, a half hour each way. And I'm a pretty hearty person, and I'm not guessing that everybody's going to want to do that, or when it's zero degrees out. So I have to say, I would take a lot of what the plant, the proposers are saying with a grain of salt, unless they were taking that walk themselves. I'm in favor of the whole, let's do some sub-community planning before we go ahead and use this valuable parcel of land. I feel like the way it's been out in Gun Barrel, it's been sort of piece by piece, and they've added a bunch of new condo developments and apartment buildings out by the King Supers. And it seems to have not mitigated the affordability issues. I see a lot of development in East Boulder, like a lot I see a lot of development in East Boulder, like a lot of, you know, big residential things going up. And I've never seen the price go down in Boulder despite all this building. So I think this sort of economic law that like supply and demand is just going to even things out is kind of a policy in this case. I glanced at how many apartments are available in Boulder, and it looks like there's over 1,400 available. So it's a question of price. I feel like better solution to affordability would be, maybe Boulder could explore public housing, or rent control, or something like that. But I don't think we're going to build our way out of this. And yeah, I've only got 11 seconds left, so I just wanted to once again say, I've seen a lot of promises from Light Rail to the 2006 Gun Barrel Community Center Plan that just never came to fruition, as well as the Prairie Preserve that Celestial promised many years ago. And I'm a little skeptical too of how long this would continue. Thanks.
Thank you, Lisa. Okay, Robert, you should be able to go ahead.
Hi, thank you very much. I very greatly appreciate your accommodating me coming in late. I just want to also thank the members of the board for this hearing tonight on this project. I've been before you on other projects recently, and will likely be in front of you on other projects in the not distant future. And I just wanted to share my perspective on this one as somebody in the development world professionally for the last 15 or so years, somebody who lives in Gun Barrel, and somebody who's been integrally involved in the Gun Barrel Center development nearly a decade ago. And I've had a hand in, you know, tens of thousands of units across the Western US. I am fundamentally challenged with this project as it's proposed at this site, and encourage you guys very strongly to think about this one from the perspective that this is not simply a question of additional housing in a market that unquestionably needs more housing, and that's in dire need of infill projects and housing in the appropriate place. This is an attempt to put a square peg in a round hole in a site that was very thoughtfully zoned industrial previously. And the loss of that critical industrial space, and particularly the trade for housing, while it's accommodated in code in Boulder to allow that, it often requires that, or it should require that there's significant community benefit to offset the loss of that industrial land. And respectfully, this project doesn't produce that community benefit, and it puts an increased burden on a part of town that's devoid of adequate infrastructure, and that hasn't had the thoughtful planning that this part of the town needs. So thank you very much for your consideration. I yield back. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Okay, our next few speakers will be Bruce Hall, Suzanne Smith, Elaine Erb, and Rebecca Morse. Bruce, you should be able to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, you can go ahead.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Bruce Hall. I live in Gun Barrel, actually Orchard Creek, and the city of Boulder. I support the Gun Barrel Community Alliance, and I believe that the Gun Barrel Sub-Community Plan should be completed before we allow this industrial zone land to be used for high-density residential. I really oppose this project, and I hope that you folks will too until that plan is written. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Next up is Suzanne Smith. Suzanne, you should go, you can go ahead.
Well, thank you very much. My name is Suzanne Smith. I live at 5963 Brandeis Wine Court in Boulder, in Gun Barrel. I'm very concerned about affordable housing. To reach the stated goals of Boulder, a 15% affordable housing, we need 20,000 affordable housing units. And as the previous speaker said, with the ratios of three market value units to one affordable unit, we won't get there. This development represents less than one-half of 1% of the 20,000 units we need. So if we're really serious about affordable housing, we must make a plan to reach it, reach those 20,000 units. And as the other speaker just said, we can't build our way out of it. We can't build our way to affordable housing goals. We have to think differently. So my question is, how can Gun Barrel, how can Gun Barrel help contribute to real progress towards those 20,000 units? Because I think we can, but I think we would need a sub-community plan to answer that question. And this proposal that we're looking at really does nothing meaningful, such a small amount of affordable housing units, to get us to the goal that we desperately need of 20,000 units. But a sub-community plan in Gun Barrel could get us meaningfully there. I'm also concerned about the PUD that was required that for Celestial Seasonings to buy the land. It had, you know, the PUD said it had to dedicate 20,000 square feet to serve the Gun Barrel community. And this PUD still stands, although Celestial never made good on this requirement. PUDs just don't disappear when organizations don't comply. They're not optional. PUDs are legally binding, that's my understanding. So to put this PUD aside would create a terrible precedent and undermine the valuable work that you do. And then I do want to speak, you know, if this plan goes forward, and I kind of feel like from hearing everyone talk that it will, please desegregate the housing and intersperse the affordable housing into all the units.
Suzanne, if you could wrap up, please.
Okay, that's it. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, I am now seeing Elaine Erb. Next up will be Rebecca Morse, and then our next few speakers will be Andrea Minigal, Jo Stinches, Rihanna Gray, and Claudia Hansentheen. Okay, Rebecca, you should be able to unmute.
All right, can you hear me?
We can.
All right, I'm a resident of Gun Barrel. I live at 6688 Drew Ranch Lane. I'm going to read a statement from Anna Seeger. "I'm writing to express my support for the Spine Road development with 25% affordable housing on-site. My family of five lives in affordable housing through the city of Boulder's homeownership program for low-income families. There are 36 units in our complex, and my neighbors include landscapers such as my husband, EMT workers, handyman, CU employees, DMV workers, grocery store workers, yoga instructors, et cetera. Namely, my neighbors are people who provide important services in Boulder, but who could not afford to live in Boulder without such a program. Personally, our family could not afford to live here if it were not for the city of Boulder's Affordable Housing Program. Furthermore, the affordable housing units are more racially diverse. There are Black, Native American, and Asian residents in our affordable units, but outside of the affordable units, there is only one family of color in the larger neighborhood. If Boulder is going to reduce emissions and achieve its affordable housing goals of 15% affordable housing by 2035, then developments such as Spine Road and others must be pursued aggressively. Otherwise, all the service workers that Boulder needs will be priced out and will have to commute or leave Boulder without workers. This is a situation the city is already facing. The Boulder Valley School District is 60 bus drivers short of the coming, for the coming school year, and is having difficulty recruiting teachers because of high cost of living. This trend of workers leaving Boulder for places where they are more economically welcome will continue unless you take bold action. The Spine Road development is also a good idea, because it is an integrated community with 59 permanently affordable rental units, 165 market rate workforce rentals, and six Habitat for Humanity townhomes for those middle-income brackets." I see I'm running out of time, but thank you.
Great, thank you, Rebecca. Okay, so Elaine is here. Elaine, you should be able to unmute now, and go ahead.
Good evening. This is Elaine Erb, and I live at 7955 Countryside Drive in Nywha. Boulder has a serious issue with in-commuters. People can't afford to live near their jobs in Boulder. So they're moving to areas like the Kono, Johnston, Horton, Fort Collins. These are all areas with challenges getting to their Boulder jobs. The farther a person lives from their job, the more likely they are to resort to driving alone to work. Jobs in East Boulder and Gun Barrel are harder to access than jobs in downtown Boulder. Spine Road is good for more development because of access to jobs, trails, shopping, and transit. St. Paul, in exploring residential densities, found a minimum of 20 dwelling units per acre will support BRT and fast transit. This project delivers. Density makes transit and bike lanes actually work better. Amities like the library can help residents in Gun Barrel, as well as nearby county residents. I go to Boulder in downtown to get books from the library. Now I'd be able to ride my bike to Gun Barrel for books. Pre-COVID, Spine Road saw service from the J and the 205. These and the future shuttle service will help people move through the community and to future transit improvements. The area also offers bike facilities, and these will be getting enhanced. The Lopeau Trail is nearby, and buffered bike lanes through the corridor will make it a better biking experience for residents and commuters through that area. More and more Boulder residents are turning to e-bikes. Nationally, the sales of those are growing by 11% a year. They encourage longer commutes and help people who may not previously have used bikes for transportation. The shuttle, the access to 119, all make this a great area. Speaker we hosted last week on Equity talked about sometimes we have to strive for progress, not perfection. I urge you to approve this Spine Road development.
Thanks, Elaine. Okay, next up will be Andrea Minigal. Andrea, you can go ahead, and after Andrea, Betsy Gons is here, and so Betsy will go after. Andrea, you should be able to go ahead.
All right, can you hear me?
You can.
This Andrea Minigal, representing the Boulder Chamber 2440 Pearl Street. And at the Boulder Chamber, we've made a commitment to doing all we can towards creating an equitable, inclusive community. We know it won't happen overnight, but when we have the opportunity to do so, we must, or else, as a community, we never will. That includes seeing projects that conceptually embrace these principles. And in the case of this project, we see several elements that do just that. First, it provides workforce housing options, which in Boulder we desperately need, 25% of which here on this project are permanently affordable on-site units. And expanding the diversity of housing for Boulder's workforce and families is critical to maintaining an inclusive, welcoming, economically vibrant, diverse community. It also includes innovative, mixed-use elements that merge housing, educational, economic, recreational opportunities, and services for those in the area. But most significantly, it is located in proximity to a major regional corridor, State Highway 119. And it provides eco-passes to its residents to promote the use of transit, includes a mobility hub for van pooling, shared e-bikes, car share. What we're most excited about is the on-demand shuttle service that will serve the Broadick on Barrel area. This is a gift in an area underserved by transit that sees residents dependent on their vehicles. This helps give people in the region equitable access to free on-demand service and gets cars off the road while complementing and connecting to the regional mobility investments on the diagonal. Neither our local government nor RTB have the ability to implement this, given budgets hampered by the pandemic. Yet this team is helping to implement it for the community. This should not be overlooked. It's a rare opportunity. We get a project with this kind of service for our residents and elements of equity. Not only that, but this team has thoroughly been responsive to the feedback requests by staff, planning board, city council. We encourage planning board to support this project, and I'm available for any questions related to our shuttle.
Thanks, Andrea. Okay. Is Betsy gone? Betsy, you should be able to unmute now. Hopefully that'll work. Okay.
Hi, can you hear me?
You can.
Hi, my, my. Pardon me?
You can go ahead.
Are you, I'm sorry, are you talking?
You can go ahead.
I'm sorry, are you talking to me or someone else?
Betsy, you can, you can go ahead and speak.
My sincere apologies. I just got a cast off my wrist, and my hand's not working very well. But thank you for staying late. I do appreciate it. My name is Betsy Gons. I live in Powderhorn condominiums across the street from Celestial. My husband and I bought this place 20 years ago to avoid the high rents of Boulder. We also bought it because of the promise by Celestial Seasoning to keep the prairie dog colony and the wildlife safe from development. I know there wasn't any written wording about that, but it was a promise. And there was almost mentioned earlier tonight that there are very few places left to move prairie dogs. I don't see why taking yet another one is a good idea. My other comment is that people really run to have place to live, to buy, to own, not always high rentals where the price will go up constantly. Families with children, single mothers, senior citizens such as myself, we want a place with a community. We don't want to live across from a place where people are constantly moving in and out every time the rate goes up. And I was also concerned about the Gun Barrel Commons Park Association, which we pay for. Will that land be now available to this new community at no cost? And I also want to say that even though I did work in Boulder most of my life, jobs change, and now I have to work in Lewisville. So is there going to be a requirement for the people that live there that they have to have a job in Boulder? And I do, I don't know the answer to this, but I do know that there was a parcel on each J Road, which was a large agricultural place, which could have been used to build a whole community of condos, townhouses, and actual one-storied houses for people to actually buy. I don't see that the Celestial Seasonings property is appropriate for this, because the traffic really is unbelievable. And I beg you with every ounce of my being to please deny this project, and thank you.
Thank you, Betsy. Okay, next is Rihanna Gray. Rihanna, you can go ahead.
Hi, my name is Rihanna Gray, and I live at 4757 White Rock Circle in the Powderhorn community. And I, whether, well, affordable housing is desperately needed. I'm not quite convinced that the planning regarding the traffic and the transportation has been worked out. And I'm concerned about parking being difficult like it is in San Diego or other places in California. And so I just wish that this project can be delayed until after the Gun Barrel sub-community planning is completed. I don't think it's ready to go forward yet. Thank you.
Thank you, Rihanna. Okay, next up is Claudia Hansentheen. Claudia, you should be able to unmute.
Thank you, Jean. And good evening, members of the planning board. My name is Claudia Hansentheen. I live in North Boulder. I appreciate the time you're spending with us tonight. I think these are the hardest nights, but also the best nights in some way, because we get to really talk about projects that can really move the needle on housing issues in the city. I've supported the Spine Road project from the start, because it brings workforce housing in from the L-Towns. And it puts, quite wisely, that housing in close proximity to a wealth of jobs, for the reducing the commutes and commuter traffic that are so harmful to both the environment and our human communities. The Spine Road Apartments will also include some of the first permanently affordable units in Gun Barrel. And while prices in the area have always been lower than elsewhere in Boulder, they too are climbing out of reach. too are climbing out of reach. This project has seen some significant changes since this board and city council concept had a concept reviews last year, and most of those changes are for the better. On the plus side, we're gaining six Habitat for Humanity townhomes, a more permeable site, more cohesive recreational spaces, space for a significant community amenity, and even a pilot neighborhood circulator. A single development can't satisfy neighbors' requests for more local services, but this one acknowledges the need. One thing that's not an improvement is the loss of 38 proposed housing units, but at least the plans remain compatible with the condominiums to the east. Since we last saw this project, the opposition has also evolved. I don't know what happened to change the focus from prairie dog conservation to social justice, but hearing neighbors complain about legal segregation, when onsite affordable housing has been such a difficult goal for Boulder to achieve, feels disingenuous at best, and it ignores the fact that the real corridor is and always has been somewhere between Boulder's city limits and the East County line. Change is hard, but that doesn't mean it's not right. The Spine Road Apartments address a growing need in Boulder and meet the city's criteria for review. Please approve them tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Claudia. Okay. Let's see. Next up is Will Keely, followed by Tracy French. Will, you should be able to go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Great. Will Keely, 7634 Chathamway, Heatherwood. Thanks for the opportunity to speak with you tonight, especially staying up late. I know how it goes. I've lived in Boulder since 95 and Heatherwood since '07. I have several concerns about this proposal. I submitted more detailed comments to you via email, but I wanted to probably highlight a few of my concerns. The proposal does not align with many policies in the comp plan, including those addressing the impacts of fossil fuel use on climate change, creating pedestrian-oriented or 15-minute neighborhoods, and channeling development to areas with adequate infrastructure, among others. The proposal, if approved, would turn a natural area into predominantly impermeable services and increase their urban heat island effect. Green roofs on bike port roofs don't work in this heat. The developers identified an increase in open space during their presentation, but the area is currently open space. A grass park does not provide the same ecological services as an undeveloped area, just ask the red-tailed hawks. The Daily Camera today reported only LA and California's Central Valley exceeded front-range levels of air pollution. The city has done a tremendous job identifying climate change as a serious threat and developed a progressive climate action plan, yet this proposal would increase single occupancy vehicle trips that the comp plan and the cap aims to reduce. The traffic's already mess on, on J. RTB removed the Heatherwood leg from the 205 due to low ridership. Judging from the signs posted before the bus stops were removed, it's not coming back. There are too many unknowns about access to public transportation from the site to satisfy guidance from the comp plan. Please table this proposal until, until these considerations and others can be discussed and addressed. Like all others, unfavorable affordable housing is the location. Rezoning and developing the empty diagonal plaza where bus routes, grocery stores, restaurants, and other amenities are very close should be the priority per housing, per the policies outlined in the comp plan, not sites like this that lack walkable amenities and is already suffering from traffic problems. King Supers here in Gun Barrel is already consistently short on basic amenities ever since the new apartments came in years ago. Moving forward with county to enforce a PUD and please work for the Gun Barrel community to create a working group to further ensure Gun Barrel retains its character and improves collaboration between the community and the developers. Thanks for your time.
Thanks, Will. Okay. Next up is Tracy French, and we have a few folks back that weren't here earlier on the list, Randall Clark and also Joe Stinchess. So, okay, let's see. Tracy, you may go ahead. We see you are muted.
Okay, hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, Orchard Creek. The density of Powderhorn is 17 units per acre. The density of Orchard Creek is three units per acre. Built Celestial Seasonings parcel should be between 17 and three units per acre, not 24 ultra-high city density. Today, alternate transportation is between 0 and 5% based on hours of observation. It is impossible to estimate 20% alternative transportation presented by the builder if you actually do the study. The parking spaces provided for the 230 units is 1.374 per unit. Colorado averages two cars per household. This means there will be 144 cars without parking spaces, more than a half a mile of cars. This is just one of many horrible side effects of rushed, poor, dense city planning in a rural area. This complex will be slammed against Spine Road. The next closest buildings along the entire two miles of Spine Road and throughout Gun Barrel, including industrial buildings, are at least 300% further and very often more than 1,000% further from the road. This feature has been presented by the builder as hugging the street. It's a downtown Boulder city building in rural Gun Barrel, miles from north rural Boulder. The complex is also slammed against the low-density Orchard Creek neighborhood directly to the south. Boulder is one of the most innovative cities in the country. It is a very bad idea to use up light industrial to permanently have more unnecessary housing. Please leave a better legacy for the next generations as we previously, as previous generations so carefully planned and provided to you. Please wait for the Gun Barrel comprehensive plan that should be in process now. If you cannot wait, please require modifications to make this builder's plan fit better into rural northeast Boulder. I firmly support the community, Gun Barrel Community Alliance, and all of their points against this builder's plan as it stands today. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Okay, Randall, Randall Clark will be next. Randall, you should be able to unmute. You can go ahead.
Yeah, I'm not even going to talk for two minutes. I have a rushed job, but I just wanted to say that I endorse at least Rihanna and the person who spoke before me, and Angie Shaw, who has talked a lot about sort of the density of the different communities. I have to say that just first off, I was very upset to hear the first person who spoke about the project from the city, or I think was advising the city, calling this a neighborhood. I mean, I don't consider myself a different neighborhood than, you know, Hunter Creek or Twin Lakes or, you know, we're all the Gun Barrel neighborhood, so we've always considered our, we're all part of the same neighborhood. So it was very upsetting that she kept using that term, and I know one of you questioned her on that, but it's, I think it might signify just something about this feeling that it's going to be the separate thing, and, and I don't think that's the case. I mean, they're going to be, they're going to be part of the neighborhood, and, and I object because, for a lot of the same reasons, and any more parking along Spine would be dangerous. The parking we already have there is very dangerous. Bikers have said they don't go anywhere near those cars, so they have to go into the middle of the road to park past. Parking going along Spine would be just, just very onerous. And I guess the, the thing I feel is that other neighborhoods that you've been working so well with, you know, the community's very involved and, and, and there's a lot of responsiveness, and they've been successful, those that have been mentioned by Metropolis and, and many other people. And so I just want to make it clear that, that I oppose this, and it has nothing to do with opposing affordable housing. I think we all know that more affordable housing is needed, but there's so many changes in buildings and places where affordable housing could exist. I just think this is not, as everybody has said, this is not a walkable neighborhood. It is absolutely not. Very few people, no one that I know walks to King Supers to go shopping and come back or do anything productive there, nor would we take an Uber, you know, I mean, or share ride. So I think that things have been presented inaccurately to you from the builders, but intentionally or not, and I just think that, that we should just halt and not rush into something that really could have an effect, a negative effect on this part of the whole Boulder community.
Drop up, please.
Yeah, I'm done. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Jean, let's go ahead and do two more comments, and then we'll, for people to talk to us, and then we'll go ahead and take one more break.
Okay, that'd be great. Joe Stinchess is here, and it looks like Joe was not here when I was moving down the list before, so we'll do Joe. And then the first other one that I have on, on my list with raised hands is Steve Hinson. So we'll do Joe and Steve, and then we can take a break. Joe, you should be able to go ahead.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Good. Hi, I'm Joe Stinchess. I live on Gun Barrel Avenue, and I want to say I support the Gun Barrel Community Alliance and that this proposal be rejected because of the many reasons presented by Gun Barrel Community Alliance, or at best be tabled until after Gun Barrel sub-community planning that would be in line with the new Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan update is completed. And I also want to add that I do care very much for the wildlife, and I remember a time when that was important to Boulder. Animals are very important to the fabric of life. So I thank you for your time.
Okay, next up is Steve Hinson. Steve, you should be able to go ahead.
Yes, hello. I'm Steve Hinson. I'm the Assistant Executive Director for Flatiron's Habitat for Human, and I'm pleased to speak in support of this project for many reasons. Research shows that the best quality neighborhoods are built with both the younger and older generations in mind. They're inclusive, strong, and cohesive. This development of proposing strong intergenerational housing options that will pick up where we, as a Habitat affiliate, traditionally end for qualifications. This project has much-needed workforce housing for families across the spectrum of housing needs. We're excited to partner with this project to build much-needed middle-income homeownership opportunities for hard-working families. While Habitat traditionally builds low-income housing, we have identified the significant need in our community for affordable middle-income housing, too. There's very few options for families earning in the 100 to 120% area median income range, and we're looking to build six townhomes that address that need. These won't be traditional Habitat homes built with volunteers, but they're a new venture and innovative into middle-income development, and we work with the city's housing division to sell these permanently affordable homes to qualifying families. We believe this will further expand our work to meet the community's specific needs, and we're excited to add this to our strong low-income affordable housing program. Thank you for your consideration of this project.
Thank you, Steve. David, this is a good time for a break. I'm going to go through, because I had been taking notes of the folks that had noted that they wanted to speak, and so when we come back, I'll, I'll read off names so folks know who's coming up.
Great. Yeah, thank you, Jean. You're doing such a fabulous job of remembering who to look back to and everything, so thank you for all that. Let's take a, oh, a three-minute break. Be here, back here about 8 after 10, please.[1400.07] Let's take a three-minute break. Be here, back here about eight after 10:00, please.
Okay, we should be reconvening again.
Okay. For the next speakers, here's who I've got on the list, along with the raised hands. I've got Ralph Burns, Laine Talpin, Katie Dyer, Lynn Segal, Mary Duval, John Pollack. For the next few, I think I've got about 12. I will do that. I will count till so we can find out exactly how many we have left. So let's see, Ralph would be next. Ralph, you can go ahead.
Hello, Boulder Planning Board. My name is Ralph Burns. I'm a longtime resident of North Boulder, and the overwhelming majority of my career workplaces have been within practical walking distance of the Celestial Season's location. Boulder has a clearly and indisputably identified need for affordable housing. And this project clearly fulfills those aims with 25% co-located, permanently affordable homes. This is a critical need to accommodate families and workers and help local businesses thrive. Opponents of affordable housing projects like this operate from a NIMBY mentality without compassion. The city study has established that those living on the financial margins are twice as likely to be our non-white population. To oppose affordable housing like this is an action reinforcing the continuing suffering of Boulder's non-white people. Those are people whose voices are frequently not heard at civic hearings or community debates. If a tea factory can't coexist within the community, so can affordable housing that is in a relatively similar density to neighboring housing. The current site zoning for this construction is industrial. We have a choice of approving this compassionate housing project or another factory. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ralph. Okay, next up is Laine Talpin. Laine, you should be able to go ahead.
Hi, my name is Laine Taplin. I'm a Boulder resident, and I'm here representing Boulder Showing Up for Racial Justice.
Laine, you're really faint. If you could speak up or get a little closer to the microphone, that would be great.
Is this better?
A little better.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'm Laine Taplin. I'm a member of Boulder Showing Up for Racial Justice. And I'm here to support the Spine Road development. I've witnessed many friends, colleagues, and community members move out of Boulder because of lack of financial access to housing. Boulder is inaccessible and is becoming less and less economically and racially diverse, due in part to lack of affordable housing. It's our responsibility to change this, even if this proposal isn't 100% perfect. I would like to see truly affordable housing throughout Boulder. This project isn't enough, but it's a start. The city of Boulder needs to build housing projects like Spine Road in all parts of the city in order to meet the goal of 15% permanently affordable housing by 2035. This project is reflective of the values of openness, inclusivity, and diversity that so many Boulder residents promote as being central to the Boulder lifestyle. Approving projects like this is exactly what affirms the community and the outside world that our actions match our values. I've heard a lot of people tonight talk about worries about more traffic. I also don't want more traffic. However, this is part of the privilege that I'm willing to give up in order to have a more diverse and accessible Boulder where my community members can afford to live and work permanently. I do think the transportation planning with this project needs to be given thorough consideration so that biking, walking, and green transport is safe and accessible. Fighting against racism and classism means shifting away from our scarcity mindset and from exclusionary housing practices. I support the Spine Road project and urge you to support it as well. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Laine. All right, next up is Katie Dyer, followed by Lynn Segal, and then Mary Duval and John Pollack. I've got about 14 on the list now, and I'll check back with all the hands to make sure we get everyone. So if you haven't heard your name yet, just hold on. We'll get to you. Okay, Katie. Katie, you should be able to go ahead.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Thank you, Planning Board. My name is Katie Dyer, and I live at Dartmouth and 32nd Street in Boulder. I support the Spine Road development because we need to support affordable housing. Affordable housing is a racial justice and economic justice issue that cannot wait. Current inequities in housing stand on hundreds of years of racist history and racist housing policy. We need to take strong actions to counteract these inequities now. The Spine Road Plan supports Gun Barrel to be a welcoming, inclusive, and alive neighborhood. This project strengthens and diversifies Gun Barrel's housing options. And yes, we should also repurpose buildings that already exist in Boulder to create more affordable housing, too. Definitely. Let's also launch those projects. Stable and attainable housing is crucial for individuals, families, and communities to thrive. Accessible housing is directly connected to public health, educational equality, economic justice, inclusivity, and social justice. Making housing accessible is hugely important to resilient communities and to me. And yeah, I just want to offer my support for this Spine Road project. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Katie. Okay, next up is Lynn Segal. Lynn, you can go ahead and unmute.
Lynn Segal, 138 Dewey, at the base of the Cuneta between Mapleton and Lewland.
Lynn, can you speak up a little bit or get closer to the microphone? You're really faint.
Can you hear now?
Speak loudly.
This is a really sad irony that the people that need the affordable housing ally themselves with the business community who want to push this. And the irony is that this is not more affordable housing. It's not. This is less affordable housing. This is 25% affordable housing. And that affordable housing generates more unaffordable housing. This is an example of intra-urban sprawl. Gun Barrel, CU South, these annexations are out of control. We can't handle Gun Barrel. God forbid, we could handle CU South when we won't even have any control over the plan of what goes on on that property. This is stunning, stunning. That Boulder can set themselves up with a huge out-of-balance job situation like we have and then take care of it with more housing that's going to generate more jobs, that's going to generate more housing, that's going to generate more jobs. And you look 50 years from now, and you will see that it is worse than it's ever been. This is not land use planning. This is not the way it goes. Look, let me tell you what happened right here with, let's read this, from Crispin Porter and Bogusky. I'm not, let's see. I'm not worried about Boulder, well, let's see. He pointed out that Denver and other cities in Boulder County can offer lower costs of living while providing the front-range lifestyle that companies in the region leverage for recruiting employees. He said that the move is a sign that the premium for living and doing business in Boulder is no longer producing the returns that would make it worthwhile for a business the size of Crispin Porter and Bogusky, who left Gun Barrel. We don't have an oversupply of jobs. They're leaving.
Lynn, if you could wrap up, please.
Condition.
Thank you, Lynn. Okay, next up is Mary Duval. Mary, you should be able to unmute.
Hi, everybody. I'm Mary Duval. I'm with Thistle Communities. We're at 6,000 Spine Road. We have 44 employees and only 10% live in the city of Boulder. We'd welcome a walkable commute from an affordable home. More equally important, Boulder has a published vision for its housing future. It's called the Boulder County Regional Housing Plan. The plan speaks to the potential for affordable housing growth across our county to help solve a lot of the housing issues. And it specifically identifies Gun Barrel and Boulder as having the potential to increase their affordable housing from 3,500 units up to a potential of possibly 8,300 units. The Spine Road project brings that vision a little closer to reality by using some of the key goals IDed and are accepted regional strategy for housing. It has a business component to it in the form of the Chamber Shuttle. It embeds transportation directly into the new community. It's being done by private developers rather than a government agency. And it's balancing affordable rentals and homeownership opportunities in the same community. One of the primary strategies identified in the regional strategy is to secure land and development opportunities for community housing, not for grocery stores, not for recreational opportunities, but for community housing. The plan recognizes how scarce the parcels are that can make this kind of difference. This is a regional housing plan that's been adopted by our city. We all might give something up for the greater good, for the benefit of the greater good. But think back to the letter that you just heard from Anna about the benefits of her living in her community. And in approving this, nothing stops any other planning areas in Gun Barrel when the city can get to them. Strive for progress, as was said, and do something tangible when you approve this development.
Thank you, Mary. Okay, the next few folks on the list, we've got John Pollack, Tom Volkhausen, Macon Coles, Simone Domingue, Leslie Barrett, Nicole Spear, and then a few more after that. I just want to let you know who is up next. Okay, John. You should be able to unmute.
Hi there. My name is John Pollack. I'm on the board of Bridge House, but I'm speaking as an individual. And I really think you have before you an incredible opportunity. I won't reiterate all the positives about this, because you've heard it several times already this evening. But I do think you have a unique affordable housing opportunity. The transit solutions are really excellent. I'm very excited about Bridge House's opportunity to expand our social enterprise on behalf of the community. So from a social responsibility and environmental responsibility perspective, I urge you very strongly to support this proposal. Thank you for all of your time.
Thanks, John. Okay, next up is Tom Volkhausen. Tom, you should be able to go ahead and unmute.
Hi, I'm Tom Volkhausen. I live at 2636 Fifth Street in Boulder. And I'm speaking in strong support of the Spine Road project. I've lived in Boulder for 40 years, and we've all seen this movie play out. Affordable housing and workforce housing is proposed. Housing opponents try first to completely kill the project. If they can't kill the project, their next step is to reduce the number of units into insignificance. If they fail at that, the next tactic is to attempt indefinite delay, which is exactly what will be the result if the Planning Board says we cannot do any development until we have a Gun Barrel sub-community plan. Alex Stephan, talking about climate action, coined the phrase predatory delay. Delay in providing affordable housing is a win for existing homeowners because they can restrict supply, and their prices increase, and they aren't inconvenienced. Meanwhile, 45,000 people are driving every day down the diagonal. 60,000 people are incommuting into Boulder. The front range is failing to meet air quality health standards approximately 70 days a year, increasing every year. Articulates and ozone are above federal standards. This is an opportunity to provide housing which addresses our climate goals, our affordability goals, our inclusionary goals. And the decision should not rest with a few neighbors. The decision should be made by all the citizens of Boulder. And at a national and state level, Biden and Polis are both acting to prevent exclusionary zoning. Stopping this project is an example of exclusionary zoning. And I urge the Planning Board to support this project.
Thanks, Tom. Okay, next up is Macon Coles. Macon, you should be able to go ahead.
Good evening, Planning Board. My name is Macon Coles. I live at 1726 Mapleton. At the retreat one week ago, your lawyer, Hella, laid out the duty of the Planning Board. And I want to go back to that and the slide set that she showed you. She showed you the things that when you're performing site review, you have to do to fulfill your duty, like the site review you're doing this evening. You act as judges. Your discussion and questions are solely to determine whether or not the proposed project meets the review criteria in 9-2-14 of the code. If there appears to be a conflict between the policies of the Boulder Valley Comp Plan and the specific provisions of the code, then it is the code provisions you must apply. And if the criteria of site review in 9-2-14 are met, you must approve the application. An assertion by anyone that this project should be denied because of an external park or prairie dogs, or the desire to have a sub-community plan, or that the density is wrong, or what the developer did at another project has to be disregarded because none of these assertions relate to the review criteria in 9-2-14. And if it doesn't relate to those criterias as judges, it is not relevant to your decision. We desperately need housing for middle-income workers. We've been talking in this community for a long time about increasing economic and racial diversity of the community. Everyone knows that. And even the GCA said last week on KGNU that this was a well-designed project. Just don't put it in our backyard. Put it somewhere else. That's what all the neighborhoods say. This application meets every single one of the site review criteria. Your responsibility runs to the whole city, not just the adjacent neighbors. And your duty is to approve it. Thank you for hearing us.
Thank you, Macon. Okay, next up is Simone Domingue. Simone, you should be able to unmute.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Simone Domang, and I live in Martin Akers. I support the Spine Road development because this development moves Boulder towards its affordable housing goal. Making housing accessible is hugely important for resilient and thriving communities and is directly connected to making Boulder a more inclusive space for Black Indigenous people of color and low-income folks, something the city and residents profess to care about. The city and residents need to acknowledge that its unwillingness to build affordable housing is a contemporary mechanism of exclusion, particularly racial exclusion. This development is a small step toward diversifying Boulder, but one the city should take. Renters and buyers for these housing options might also be essential workers, like people we heard from tonight, people that grow food and provide needed services for other residents in Boulder. They deserve to live where they work. Thank you.
Thank you, Simone. Okay. Next up is Leslie Barrett. Leslie, you should be able to unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Great. Hi, my name is Leslie Barrett. I currently live at 665 Manhattan Drive, and I support this plan. In a few weeks, I'm moving to White Rock Circle as it's the most relatively affordable place I could find for my current needs. In my six years in Boulder, I've always lived within a 10-minute walk to a grocery store, coffee shops, and restaurants. I'm excited about the move, but I've been bummed that the walkability is so poor in that area, as many people have mentioned tonight. As I've sat in this meeting and seen the details of this project, I've grown increasingly excited about the prospect of what this neighborhood could become. I'm a walker and a writer in my free time. I love a morning walk to a coffee shop, and I spend lots of time at the library. Right now, those things are not accessible by foot here. Having access to a cafe and a library only a block away would markedly improve living there and support a better quality of life. So in addition to the need for more affordable housing, I urge you to approve this plan to improve the neighborhood for all those in the area. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Okay, our next our next speakers, we have Nicole Spear, Laurel Herndon, Chelsea Castellano, Rich Bland, Danielle Stanton, David Scott, and Jake Brady. Oh, let's see. Nicole, you should be able to go ahead.
Good evening, and thank you for listening to all of us tonight. I'm Dr. Nicole Spear. I live and work in Boulder, and I support this development project. My employees can no longer afford housing in Boulder. They and many others are moving out of our community. I know I'm not the only person running a business in Boulder who's struggling to recruit and retain qualified staff due to our city's rising housing costs. I pay my staff well above minimum wage and well above median income, and they still cannot afford to live in the city where they work. We all want a vibrant, economically thriving city that welcomes a diverse group of residents and has a chance of meeting its climate goals. How can we do this when we're losing young residents and families and low- and middle-income workers every year to surrounding communities that have more housing options? Time is a privilege our city does not have. The Spine Road project will not solve our housing crisis, but it will be a step in the right direction with regard to our housing goals, our climate goals, and our equity goals. The range of housing options in this project addresses the missing middle concept with varied housing forms from studios to three-bedroom apartments and townhomes. Allowing people to live closer to where they work is a climate-friendly approach that will boost our workers' resilience by reducing their stress and increasing their connectedness to our community. And the mix of workforce and onsite affordable units in this project will create a more diverse neighborhood, which will be more reflective of incomes throughout the county. My world-class employees came to Boulder because they love our city, but they've been pushed out despite my best attempts to keep their salaries high enough to offset rising housing costs. One of the first commenters tonight said we can wait on this project because land isn't going anywhere. But the same is not true for our workers. It will not be long before workers who have been pushed out of Boulder choose to work where they live. Our workers need more housing options now, and I hope you will approve this project and support our business's attempts to sustain our city's exceptional workforce.
Thank you, Nicole. Okay, next up is Laurel Herndon. Laurel, you should be able to go ahead. Okay, next up is Laurel Herndon. Laurel, you should be able to go ahead.
Hello, my name is Laurel Herndon. I live at five twenty Sky Trail in unincorporated Boulder County, and I am strongly in support of this project. I'm the Executive Director of the Immigrant Legal Center of Boulder County. We're a nonprofit on North Street in downtown Boulder. For the last fifteen years, we've helped hundreds of Boulder immigrants expand their participation in the community. Many start out in Boulder Meadows or San Juan del Centro. And because of our longitudinal connection with them, we can tell you they are now moving to Deacono and Firestone and in commuting to Boulder. So we're excited about this project, particularly for our dozens of current DACA participants who are Boulder High School graduates. They're committed to Boulder. They're our cultural brokers, and they need this development because they also are long-distance incommuners. But let me tell you about one really special individual, our CU intern from Puerto Rico, Francisco. We were able to hire him after graduation, and we watched him struggle to find a place to rent. He's a biker, and Gun Barrel would have been absolutely perfect for Francisco, but he ended up renting in Longmont and using my old truck to commute to Boulder. Individuals who need housing rarely have their voices heard. But at the Immigrant Legal Center, we hear their housing struggles every day. So I want to ask you to please move forward with the Spine Road project and help us maintain Boulder's diversity.
Thank you, Laurel. Okay, next up is Chelsea Castellano. Chelsea, you should be able to go ahead.
Hi, I'm Chelsea Castellano. I live in Boulder. And I am here in complete support of the Spine Road project. But to be honest, I really don't want to be here tonight because my grandma just got into town, and I'd love to be spending time with her. But people just keep coming out in opposition of housing, and I need you to know that there are people out there who want more housing without delay. This is the phenomenal project that has everything this community has said we want in theory. Every time a housing project has come forward, people say they are against it for one reason or another. People demand onsite affordable units, and now that this project has it, they're demanding a different version of it that doesn't work with the financial models. And the units that are integrated and will receive all of the amazing benefits and amenities that this development will offer. In fact, the affordable portion of the project has been moved to the northern portion of the site to provide more direct access to the community and open space. So and they're even for sale permanently affordable onsite units in partnership with our local housing partners. So people have asked for mixed property types to foster a diversity of people, lifestyles, and lifestyles, and this development has it. So we all know that even if you were to accommodate every wish some of these people tonight have demanded, they will come up with new reasons to not support expanding access to housing in Boulder. And some people just say the quiet part out loud. In reviewing the emails sent to planning board, I saw one from a woman named Joanne Nutson. She wrote, quote, "What more do we have to do to get the message across that this development is to be stopped? Cancelled. Go elsewhere for your affordable housing," end quote. So, planning board, my question for you tonight is, are you going to side with Joanne? Or are you going to represent the interests of the whole community and those who need housing now? Thank you.
Thank you, Chelsea. Okay, next up is Rich Bland, followed by David Scott, followed by Jake Brady. And Danielle Stanton, I saw your hand up earlier, so, but I don't see it now. So you can let me know if you'd like to still go ahead and speak. Rich, you can, you can go ahead.
Hi, so Rich Bland is really Holly Sanders. I am on my husband's computer, and that's what came up. I live in Powderhorn, right across, off of Spine, right across from what will be built. And wow, I feel like, I think we all relied, we're relying on our Gun Barrel Community Alliance. And we were told that we shouldn't speak if we didn't have anything really new to say because we've bet a few times. So I fear that so many people in my neighborhood haven't called in because they feel like what we've already said a thousand times over, kind of what we're saying. So it's so fascinating. I'm going to speak practically. I'm clearly against this. We've lived here for twenty-plus years. I've lived here since my husband's born and raised in Boulder. We've lived here, you know, I've lived here all my adult life. I worked with At Risk Youth, that the community at Boulder County Mental Health Center, Mental Health Center Partners for ages, right? Um, I feel like the nature that I was, we chose to live here. We chose not to live downtown. We took some space because what we dealt with both at work required that we had some peace. And we have a community, I'm going to say, like, we have a community here. Someone else said this too. We are a community unit as we are. And throwing this in front of us is like doomsday. It is so anti who we are a community. We are as, who we are, as I talk about that. We own our spaces. We, all my neighbors around me, who I talked to twenty-plus years. We, it's so perplexing and confusing and how they show the photos. It looks like it's, like, you think it's just going to be a part of our community all of a sudden, and we're going to reject this so much. It's just ruined, it's the ruining of our souls. I don't know how to put it any better than to say that. And I just beg of all begs that at least we get a chance to wait and figure something better out. Look, I want affordable housing. I used to help people find affordable housing. Um, but someplace else, this is too much of a treasure. It's like our Chautauqua. That's what I kept saying. I mean, it's our history. It's our memories. That's our traditions. And once you take those away, I mean, life isn't worth much, right? Mental health-wise, I mean, we all need to be more a part in a community. And you're going to give us something that is not at all a part of this community we've all made out here for years.
Holly, can you wrap up, please?
I'm just begging you to give us a chance to not do this right away. Don't say yes to this. And give us a chance to figure out a better place, and maybe we'll have a better solution for you. Lots of smart people out here. Thank you.
Thanks, Holly. Okay, next up is, next up is Danielle Stanton, followed by David Scott and Jake Brady. Danielle, you can go ahead.
Um, thank you. I'm just, I have to take a breath for a second after that. Um, my name is Danielle Stanton. I too live in Gun Barrel. I am raising my two kids here with my husband. And while I have not been here for twenty years, I've been here for, I think, the last six. And I couldn't, we could not afford, we were renting in Boulder and couldn't afford to buy in Boulder. We moved to Gun Barrel and are so grateful to be here. It is such an incredible place to live for many reasons, but mostly because of the supportive community, and I agree with the last speaker. But because of that, we welcome more neighbors, especially people who would benefit from affordable housing. And I think that this project provides much-needed housing for many people who already work in Gun Barrel and Boulder. And it will also offer options for seniors and young families and empty nesters and teachers. And I work, I too work in a local nonprofit that serves under-resourced youth and families. So I know firsthand the challenges, the high cost of living for many of these families who are already living and working in Boulder, who pay way too much for their, of their household income towards housing costs. So I am in complete support of this project. I, stable and attainable housing is crucial for the individuals, the families, and communities to thrive here. Accessible housing is directly connected to so many things: public health, education, educational equity, economic justice, inclusiveness, all the things that we all have been talking about, more so in the last year than ever before. I, I think this is a huge, a huge part of us moving forward as a resilient and thriving community. And we all say we want an equitable community. But we won't move forward if people do not open up to change, even if that change is a little bit uncomfortable. And it just won't happen. And so I'm not going to be the cliche that makes the quote, but we have to be the change. We do.
Danielle, you could wrap up, please.
Yes, I just, people just, you know, get out of your comfort zone and open up yourselves a little bit more. And so I appreciate all the time everyone has given. This has been a long night. So thank you to all of you for what you're doing.
Thank you, Danielle. Okay, next up, David Scott. David, you should be able to unmute.
Can you unmute? Thank you. Thank you, Planning Board, for sitting and listening to this. This is a classic "not in my backyard" situation. It's happened all over the country. I've heard a lot of talk about affordable housing and being, having ownership. Boulder's Affordable Housing Ownership Program is basically a failure if you're talking about people getting, getting ahead. Get three percent appreciation a year. We've had three percent, we've had six percent appreciation in the last ninety days. We put those people on a treadmill going backwards is really what happens when you get into that. These apartments at least are something that will allow them to go forward, and they are, many of them, affordable. And will continue to be affordable. I wa, I live out here. I've been here for a while. I started here as affordable situation. I see virtually no one on the buses. We talk about all this public transportation. It's a nice pipe dream, but they're not using it. It's underutilized now. The people that have been talking, they're not using those buses. They're driving their cars with themselves. They're doing like so many of the rest of us do. We need this. I thank you for your listening. I ride Spine Road because it's one of the quieter places I can ride as I ride towards Boulder. And critical mass is an important thing. And for commercial space to exist, they have to have people. The Gun Barrel Shopping Center, by and large, is not a great success because there's not sufficient commercial, there's not sufficient mass. This developer has been forward-thinking enough to figure out how at least he can make those tenants able to be there with little or no rent or no cost. Otherwise, you couldn't afford to have a coffee shop or anything else that was commercial because you won't generate enough traffic to keep the doors open. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Okay, the last hand I see is Jake Brady. So if there's anyone else here who would like to address the board after Jake, please use the raise hand function now. And Jake, you should be able to go ahead.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. My name's Jake Brady. I live in Martin Akers. Thanks for listening tonight. I have a few things to get off my chest from the start. Really dislike our current real estate situation. I dislike that in our country, housing has become an investment vehicle rather than a human right. I dislike that I, along with my friends, have been relegated to a, basically a permanent renter class, even on a salary that is above the limit for affordable housing in this city. I dislike certain parts of our building code and financing tools and land use policies. But all that being said, I strongly support this project. All the data we have in front of us tells us that we need to build more housing, full stop. We don't have the luxury of time on our side. I've heard quite a few folks talk about environmental concerns this evening. It might surprise some of my neighbors to know that our greenhouse gas methodology is about to change dramatically, and this could potentially double, triple, or even worse, our numbers. Remember that our baseline is a per-cap number greater, greater than nearly every other front-range municipality, and even New York City. Anything that moves vehicle miles traveled needle in the right direction, even if it is not perfect, is a moral imperative. Anything that decrease, increases density and moves the needle on infill, which has been identified by multiple institutions as the number-one way for communities to hit their greenhouse gas targets, is a moral imperative. I will never assume ill will on the part of others. We are all human beings. Ultimately, I can't fault folks for having concerns about developments. But that being said, I have to point out that the target for this has clearly shifted over the past year or so. I remember sitting in on meetings where groundhogs were discussed ad nauseam. And it really makes it difficult for me to believe that a sub-community plan would change much here. We've seen the ire that other projects in denser areas have drawn in the city. Alpine Balsam comes to mind. If Holiday is the ideal target, I'd like to note that Holiday is further from a grocery store than this development, at least by my measurement. I digress. Considering the history of Gun Barrel and current zoning, this is about as quality of a proposal as we are going to get. Again, it is a moral imperative that we build more housing. We need to act now. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Jake. Okay, I, that brings us to the end of those with hands raised. And I think for anyone who had messaged, messaged me in the chat.
Having a little bit of mouse issues there. Thank you, Jean. Well, last call, I guess. It seems like we have reached the end of the public input portion of this hearing. I want to thank the public for all of your thoughtful comments tonight. I, I think that there were a lot of very respectful ways that people expressed themselves and a lot of really good points that we heard tonight. So we will be thinking about everything that we heard. We voted at the beginning of this public hearing to go ahead and save the deliberation for next week's regular planning board meeting, which is the twenty-fourth of June, Thursday. So we will be reconvening this, this item at that point. The public hearing is now closed, so we will be, and I'll let Hella chime in on, on what we may or may not do over the next week.
And before you close the public hearing, David, to give the applicant an opportunity to,
Thank you. Thank you. That is part of the public hearing. I almost forgot that part. So thank you for reminding me. So before we close the public hearing, yes, I'd like to give the applicant a chance to, to respond. So Bill, would you like to kick off through the, through the group?
Sure, just a few things, and thank you for clarifying. I wasn't sure if we were doing this now or next week, but thanks. So just a few, a few things that we wrote down as we listened. So we, we heard a lot about missing services in Gun Barrel, things like coffee shops, restaurants, city services, the library, transit solutions. And I, just to remind us, that's exactly what this development is proposing to provide. And obviously, one single project can't fix everything. But again, it's doubling the walk score, so it makes it considerably better. And remember that that's for everybody, not just for this project, but the entire neighborhood gets the benefit of that increased walkability. There was a lot of comments about Spine Road. Again, this project can't fix all of Spine Road, but it can impact the part that it touches. And so the, the elements that are being added, they were questioned a few times. Those are not what the design team came up with. That's the city of Boulder Transportation Staff using best practices and frankly, just informing us what will have the greatest impact on safety and speed. And so things like the seven-foot upper bike lane and the parallel parking, tree logs through the sidewalks, those are what the city staff dictated as the best impact on safety and speed and traffic on that road. And the other thing to keep in mind is regarding traffic, the site is currently approved for a hundred and seventy thousand square feet of commercial use, and that includes trucks. So the traffic, according to the, the traffic analyst, will go down compared with this residential project compared to the proposed commercial project that's, that's already approved. And it won't include the trucks that that industrial project would have brought. So in terms of impact on Spine, this is considerably lighter. As Community Cycle said in their letter of support for this project, adding more people who can use transit services and bike facilities actually make it easier to continue to improve those services. So in other words, more bikers equals better bike facilities. More riders equals more RTV mouths. And a few people kind of spoke on both sides of that issue, but I did want to point out that letter. I thought it was very well put and really important to remember. And lastly, PUD came up a few times. I know the city staff has, has looked at that. But just to be clear, the PUD didn't create any requirements. It simply gave celestial seasonings the rights to build what was proposed in the PUD. This project is just proposing to modify a small portion of that PUD. Again, what was shown on this parcel was a hundred and seventy thousand square feet of commercial, industrial, and the associated parking. So just wanted to clarify a few things, and I think that's all we had to say. So thank you.
Great, thank you, Bill. I'm sorry that I almost closed the public hearing without that part. I kind of also got a little bit confused about what came first, so appreciate that. And with that, then we'll go ahead and remind the board that we will not be discussing this item with each other and will be avoiding any additional input until next week, since the public hearing is closed. For the public, it can be a little frustrating when we do deliberate a week later if you have some additional thoughts, but it's only, Uh, if you have some additional thoughts, but um, it, it's only fair that we just uh you know, once the public hearing is closed, that we, we take into account what we've heard so far. So uh, so next week, what we'll be doing is launching into the deliberation and uh, and making a, a decision on this. So with that, um, I guess we can move on to matters for tonight. So, um, are we okay going for just a few more minutes to, to take care of the matters? People uh, it shouldn't be too long, I think. Great. Cool, so um okay, first of all, matters from the planning board. Um, I thought I would first um just mention that uh Kristen Heiser from uh Housing and Human Services uh uh commented on our request uh that city council consider emergency relief funding for housing uh with available emergency funds. Uh, and I thought that that response was very well thought out. And so if people haven't seen it yet, uh, just take a look. It, it went to the entire planning board. And uh, it seems like um hopefully our input uh will be useful um as the city council considers ways to help existing uh residents uh who are living, who maybe uh have needs that aren't being addressed. So um so I thought it was useful and uh hopefully people felt, felt good about that. We if anyone wants to say anything about that or all right? Great. And then uh also on Tuesday, the request uh to city council for alternates uh passed the consent agenda. So we had requests out to Brian Bowen and Crystal Gray, who will probably be joining us on July twenty second. And I'm just sorry, we can't meet in person to welcome them. Uh, but uh but we'll have them uh onboard and they were both involved in the uh guiding principles for CU South. So it'll be nice to have their perspective, I think. Um, great. Uh, Charles, did uh, did you want to talk a little bit about the community benefits discussion at city council this week?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. I won't get into excruciating detail. If board members have individual questions, you can reach out, but um, so council did not approve first reading of the community benefits phase two ordinance that we proposed on Tuesday night. Instead, they directed staff to come back with kind of a radically simplified alternative. Um, that I think in its simplest form really just allows a cash and lieu option for uh commercial properties and potentially setting up some sort of a fund that um money for projects that seek additional height uh for commercial uh would go into for things like potentially rent subsidies or um, support for tenant improvement. So we're in the exploratory phases about what we think is possible um in advancing. So um, Carl, myself, Jacob, and the city attorney's office working with community vitality are I'm going to look at what an option might be to bring back um in the middle of July. So um, if folks want more detail, I'm happy to uh speak with you guys individually or um, you know, if a written summary is helpful for the board, we could probably get the uh council minutes sent out too.
Can I just ask a question of um, uh, first, thanks for that report out. Is there a good rationale for trying to figure out something on the fly between now and July? I mean, it's not, it's no longer tethered to lifting uh appendix J. So why not take the necessary time to really um come up with the, the best solution? What's the rush is what I'm asking.
I think, I think council expressed an interest, particularly this council in um, some sort of standards in place that relate to commercial affordable, affordable commercial, I'm sorry. Um, and you know, and lifting appendix J. So um, you know, I think that there's just really an interest to um, pursue some sort of uh an option and move the needle. Um, and then, you know, the larger body of work, I think, um, while complex council, I think, still expressed an interest in uh keeping it handy and seeing if there's interest in uh the following council to, to take up action on that.
Oh, oh, so it's, it's a, it's not that in July, there'll be some decision. It's the beginning of a discussion. Is that what you're saying?
No, I think um council would like us to advance an alternative ordinance. Like I said, that's radically simplified, but the larger body of work, the more complex ordinance that you guys heard um last week or the week before. Um, I, I think that there's still a lot of value in keeping that around and continuing that discussion with the incoming council.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe just to um uh, on what Sarah was asking, will, will planning board be asked to look at the uh ordinance that is going to be done uh for the September or August, September timeframe or?
Um, the, the ordinance that the planning board reviewed?
Or no, if, if there's going to be a, 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 a different, a pair of back ordinance for uh community benefits for a, a shorter timeframe, would be, would be, we be looking at that or is that?
No, they'll advance, they'll advance directly back to council for
directly to council.
So what is the status of appendix J now?
Uh, it's still in effect until August.
Uh, so so they are not uh moving it uh, extending it to January as we suggested then?
Not at this point, no.
I see.
Hey, uh, Charles or maybe Hella? Um, being, being new to planning board, I was a little confused on how a vote that's five, two on planning board um with a, with, with uh memo goes directly on the consent agenda for council and isn't a discussion topic with kind, I, I felt like we spent a lot of time thinking about it and I was kind of surprised to see it on a consent agenda. So maybe you can explain sort of the mechanisms to me. Because i- it just, it seemed odd to me. Um, but perhaps it's not, I'm, I'm just new, so. Yeah, so typically on a legislative action and Hella, feel free to jump in. On a legislative action, council makes a recommendation. I'm sorry, planning board makes a recommendation to council. Um, so you know, when we're advancing in ordinance, there's a first reading and a second reading of the ordinance. First reading is traditionally under consent. Um, council has the ability to pull something off of the consent agenda and um, you know, have a formal discussion about it. Um, in this case, they had a, a conversation just under the consent agenda. They didn't formally pull it off and schedule it for, you know, a public hearing. Uh, but it's a very typical um procedure for first reading of an ordinance to be heard under the consent agenda. Uh, the public hearing and the detailed discussion and council deliberations traditionally occurs under second reading. First reading is also an opportunity for planning board to ask, I'm sorry, for council to ask clarifying questions of staff. You know, so if they have um initial questions or clarifying questions, they can um ask those at first reading and then staff can include responses as part of the second reading proceedings.
Thanks. Okay. Well, thanks, Charles. Yeah, I um it was interesting to watch that. Uh, I wa, I watched the meeting. If you get a chance, take a look at the conversation.
And uh, the other thing of note, I think on Tuesday night that I wanted to report out to the board is that council did vote to call up the diagonal plaza concept plan. Um, so it'll be um hearing that I believe in July as well.
Yeah. Great. All right, anything else from uh uh, the planning department? Charles, anything from uh attorney, Hella? She, you're aware of? Thank you. Okay, Cindy, uh, calendar check, uh, anything? I guess we know next week we're going to be on task.
So, meeting next week, uh, regular time, six o'clock. Um, and um, then after that, hopefully a break. Uh, July first and July eighth, no meetings. And then back at it. Um, uh, the first meeting in July fifteenth, though, is a, is a joint meeting with TAP.
That's right.
Yes.
Lisa?
Yeah, I just wanted to suggest, um, if it wouldn't interfere with the way that we typically design uh the content for planning board meetings to maybe put somewhere up front, up top. It is a continuation and we're not considering any new emails or new comments or something. I, I can just imagine a lot of people kind of trying to weigh in and, and we can't stop the emails or anything, but it might be good to reiterate. Um, on the webpage.
It will definitely be on the webpage. It will definitely be a part of the packet. You know, on the agenda. I even, while we were having our meeting, I submitted the legal posting to the camera and I put in there about public comment.
Awesome. I, I know that a lot of people still won't find it, but, but that way we can say it's in five places.
Of course. Yeah.
That's great. Okay. So, anybody want to debrief the meeting? I guess we knew it was gonna go long. Um, you like the hourly breaks? I kind of like that when we're on Zoom. It's working.
I like them, but I'd request like an extra minute.
Yeah, okay.
A little tight.
Five, five minutes would be good. All right, we'll try to do five minutes. Then maybe we can go an hour and ten minutes between.
I mean, this difference, this is the difference. If you want us to have toilet paper stuck to our stuff. Run back or not. I mean, I know it's all waist up these days on the screen, but still.
Well, thank you for that.
Welcome.
We, we can count on you. Uh, yay. Um, all right, well, if there's no more debriefing to do, then uh, everybody have a great week and uh we'll see you uh next week and welcome Lipita in and uh uh, she'll be watching all the stuff that we did tonight and getting ready for, to join us. So, thanks so much.
Thanks, everyone. Have a great night.
Bye, bye. Hi, future Lipita. Bye.